Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Ashby, Warren, Harris, Hanson, Chenier, Gara, Jennings, Carr, and Mayor Steinberg.
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Let us begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and our City Year Corps of Educators to please come forward, or you can stay in place if you would like. Welcome to all of you, or come on up. Come on up. Let's do it right. We would ask that you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Yeah, yep, 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 yep. Okay.
Which way should we face? Oh, the flag.
It's a flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't go away. Don't go away.
Don't go away.
Do we have a resolution? Jay, are you doing it? Why don't you do it? I'll do the Americor. Yes, we're gonna do that. We're gonna do that in a minute. Yeah, why don't you go ahead? No, they're the same. All right. Let's do, so, welcome. We have a couple of resolutions today. The first is actually be on your agenda, recognizing Americor Service Day on April 4th, 2017. Boy, we got a lot of you here. So, I'm just gonna say a couple things about City Year. I'm pretty familiar with it, since my son was a City Year. What are you, fellows? City Year?
Core member.
Since you're, yes, since we don't pay you and you do great work and take care of our young kids. City Year is wonderful, and I think they have made a tremendous difference in Sacramento. Been here for five or six years now, at a number of our schools in Oak Park, at District Four, and District Seven and Eight, and really have done a tremendous job, basically lifting up the schools, working with our young people across the board. And so, first of all, on behalf of the council, I just want to say thank you for what you do, because it takes tremendous dedication. I know you work long hours, again, for very little money, but you're doing it because you're following your heart, and you think this is the right thing to do. And I've had great interactions with lots of you all over the years and your predecessors. So, we have a resolution for you today. I'm just gonna read a couple of pieces of it, and then, I don't know if a couple of you, I was gonna have you introduce yourselves, but there's an awful lot of you. But, you know, what the heck, we can be here all night. We won't do that. Whereas the nation cities are increasingly turning to service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs and expand economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. Whereas participants in Americor and Senior Corps address the most pressing challenges facing our city and nation from educating students for jobs for the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families to provide health services and helping communities recover from national disasters. Americor and Senior Corps participants serve in more than 50,000 locations across the country. More than 1,600 national service participants of all ages and backgrounds serve here in Sacramento. National service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and city council of Sacramento that we do hereby recognize Americor National Service Recognition Day on April 4th, 2017, and encourage residents to acknowledge the positive impact of national service in our community and extend our sincere thanks to those who serve and to find ways to give back to our community. So let's, please, give a hand to all of these. Give them a big hand. Let me, if I mic before you guys speak, I want to thank Councilmember Chenier, and I want to thank all of you for coming here tonight. You know, just looking out at all of you, here's my thought. You can look a lot of places to find out the things that are wrong in this country. When I want to look at what's right in this country, I look at you. People, as Jay said, have chosen, young people who have chosen service, who have chosen to commit to improving your communities, and it's inspiring, and I don't want you to underrate that, about how important you are, how important you are to the fabric of our community, how important you are in making a statement through the work that you do, that democracy and community are really working, even if it appears in some places, in some ways they're not, and that you hold within you a lot of power, a lot of power to change people's lives. And I hope that these experiences for you will propel you to do more great things in your life. We're grateful to you. Thank you.
And do you want to say a word, or, Beth, I don't know? Maybe introduce yourself.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Jeff Vaughn. I'm the executive director of City Year Sacramento, a proud Americor organization, and I am up here representing not just City Year, but clearly multiple wonderful organizations that are all Americor programs. And thank you for those kind words, Mr. Mayor, for this proclamation and resolution. There is nothing more important than individuals giving back to their community and putting service to others in front of their own. It's an incredible program, and we appreciate this recognition in a time when it is so vital that these programs are called out for the great that they do for our communities, that they do for our nation. And so I would like to applaud not only the City Year members that are here, but all of these organizations, and let's continue to drive this message that Americor and national service needs to be protected. Thank you very much.
Great. And I just want to say you are part of the fabric of Sacramento now, and we certainly appreciate it, and so let's give them one more hand. Why don't we do a picture if you all want to come up? I know, I'm gonna buy a white shirt and a yellow jacket. That's what I'm doing, so.
We can all be up here, maybe?
Yeah, let's all be up here. Come on. Everybody, council.
Can someone, I need a volunteer. Any volunteers in the room?
How you doing, sir?
Come on, Karen, get in there.
Come on back, you guys. You guys come back just a little bit. We've been. Let's get out of this place.
All right, everybody, one, two, three. Okay, so, follow along. One, go ahead, Councilmember Chenier.
So, this one, I love, every week we should do presentations to young people. We should just kind of keep that going.
It'd be good with me. Recognizing Sacramento County Coalition for Youth from the Sacramento County Office of Education, who's here representing you all. So, this is our second one. So, the Sacramento County Coalition for Youth has been mobilizing to address underage drinking in Sacramento region. So, we know that that's a huge issue for our young people, and, again, people who volunteer their time and effort to make this a better community. So, why don't you go ahead and tell us a little bit about what you're doing? Introduce yourselves, and we'll go from there.
Awesome. Thanks so much. Hi, my name is Jessica, and I'm from the Coalition for Safe and Healthy Arden Arcade, also a member of the Sacramento County Coalition. And thank you so much for giving us the opportunity today to accept this resolution. The resolution was initiated because of the alarming rates of underage drinking in Sacramento County and in Sacramento City. According to the California Healthy Kids Survey, it's the number-one substance abused by teens. Nearly half of all ninth graders in Sacramento County have tried alcohol, and one in 10 report binge drinking in the past 30 days. Research shows us that underage drinking leads to things like drugs children do poorly in school, they're more likely to hurt themselves or someone else, make bad decisions, or have health problems. We, as a coalition, truly believe that underage drinking is preventable through community support, and we greatly appreciate your community support today.
Good evening. My name's Joelle Ora, and I'm from the Sacramento County Coalition for Youth. We're so grateful for the support of the Sacramento City Council in our efforts to reduce the numbers of underage drinking in Sacramento County. This week, we're launching the Talk They Hear You campaign. This is a national media campaign developed by SAMSA, and we're localizing it for Sacramento County. The goal is to reduce underage drinking among youth by providing parents and caregivers with information and resources they need to start addressing the issue of alcohol with their children early and often. Studies have shown that parents have significant influence on young people's decisions to use alcohol, and when parents know about underage alcohol use, they can protect their children from the many high-risk behaviors associated with it. And parents who don't discourage underage drinking may indirectly affect their young people's drinking. By not saying anything, they're still saying something. So the campaign has three goals. First, to increase parents' awareness of the prevalence and risk of underage drinking. Second, to equip parents with the knowledge, skills, and confidence, give them tools, so they can help prevent underage drinking with their youth. And the third is just to encourage parents to act, to encourage them to talk early and often with their young people. So the coalitions, Arden Arcade Coalition and the Sacramento County Coalition for Youth, are rolling this campaign out in the next three months, April, May, and June, in Sacramento County. These are dangerous, risky times for young people with prom and graduation and summer coming. So the coalition, our coalitions will initiate social media presence, billboards, bus advertisements, print media, PSAs, TV, radio, and presentations to many parent groups around the county. Our kickoff is this Thursday, April 6th, Talk They Hear You Day in Sacramento. We're doing a kickoff event at the zoo at 10:30 in the morning. We'd love to have any of you join us. And again, we thank you so much for supporting the work that we're doing. Thank you.
Great. And on behalf of the council, let me just say thank you for undertaking this important Sanchez?
Mayor and council, I'm pleased to announce that
work. So I'm gonna come down, we'll do a quick picture.
we received a favorable defense verdict in the Novo case today.
Yep. Life-saving work. Thank you.
As you may recall, the case involved Councilmember Ashby's decision to terminate one of her at-will employees. The employee sued. Our position was that Councilmember Ashby took a reasonable step as the employer to ensure her district is properly served. The federal jury agreed, and we especially want to recognize the stellar work of senior deputy city attorney Kathleen Rogan in defending the case.
Good. Well, congratulations, Mr. City Attorney, and to Kathy Rogan, who I know is an excellent attorney, and to Councilmember Ashby, too, you know, an ordeal, and I'm glad it turned out the way it turned out. Very good. Okay. Anything further on that? Okay, any other reports from closed session? Okay. Then we will move to the consent calendar. Do we have speakers, public speakers, on the consent calendar?
We do not. We have items 1 through 15, and I have no changes, additions, or corrections.
I'll move it. Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. The consent calendar passes in 20 seconds on a vote of eight to nothing. We're going to take one item out of order today, two items out of order today, at the request of Councilmember Ashby and with my full support here. We want to take on items 23 and 24, which is the pay equity discussion and the city auditor's diversity assessment. And why don't we begin? Councilmember Ashby, do you want to introduce the subject, please?
Sure, thank you very much. I'm gonna put a slide up on the projector. Come on forward, Isabel. Jorge, you want to hang out for just a second? That's fine. Can you zoom out on that, Shirley, a little bit more, or is that as wide? That's...
Is that good?
Yeah, that's probably good. Isabel, just scoot it up a little bit, we'll lose the women in the workplace component. So today, I'm gonna talk to you guys a little bit about where we are on our parity, gender parity efforts, and we're gonna go through four items. One is, today is Pay Equity Day, so we're gonna do a resolution for that. We're gonna do the Gender Equity Update, which I promised quarterly. We're gonna talk about what's next, and then Jorge Osagüero is going to join us and give us a presentation back on an audit that we asked him to perform, looking at equity and diversity on our boards and commissions in the city of Sacramento. He did a great job with that, so we'll take a look at it. The graphic you see in front of you is actually, again, thanks to Jorge, he found a sample of this from a different city that I thought was really good and well-done, so we replicated it, of course, with City of Sacramento facts. It is just an infographic snapshot of some highlights of areas where Sacramento is doing well and areas where we need to improve, and gives you a little bit of a reflection on where we are as a city. So I'm going to start with our Pay Equity Day resolution. In case you don't know what Equal Pay Day is, this is National Equal Pay Day in the United States of America. It means that, on average, women on par with men that they work with that have the same job and the same duties have to work this many additional days, meaning all that has happened in 2017, every day. That's how many more days a woman has to work, on average, across our country, to earn what their male counterpart made in last year's calendar year. So, of course, our national goal is to see this day move all the way back, all the way back until it doesn't exist anymore. We're still in April, so that's not great. And as a result of that, and as this council's repeated commitment to addressing our own parity and equal pay, we are taking this resolution forward as receive and file today, and I'm just gonna read it because I think it's all important. More than 50 years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act, women and people of color continue to suffer the consequences of inequitable pay differentials. According to the statistics released by the U.S. Census Bureau, year-round, full-time working women earn 80% of what the full-time working men of equal, in equal positions, earn. According to an analysis of data in over 300 classifications provided by the U.S. Department of Labor Statistics, women earn less in every occupational classification for which enough data is available, including occupations dominated by women, such as nurses and teachers. Higher education is not free from wage discrimination, according to a U.S. Department of Education analysis, reporting that after controlling for rank, age, credentials, field of study, and other factors, full-time female faculty members earn nearly 10% less than their male counterparts. Women in Congressional District Six encompassing the city of Sacramento, West Sacramento, make 89 cents for each dollar earned by their male counterpart. Note, this is better than the national average, which is 80%, and the state average is slightly under us, too. So the city of Sacramento beats the nation and beats the state, but we're still at 89 cents on the dollar for every man, so we have a little ways to go. We can have a lot to be proud of, but more work to be done in those areas. Over a working lifetime, this is so interesting, over a working lifetime, this wage disparity costs the average American woman and her family half a million dollars to $800,000 in lost wages. It's a lot of groceries and gas and rent payments and kids going to college. Fair pay equity policies can be implemented simply and without undue costs or hardships, and that is what we are seeking to do in the city of Sacramento, and that is the gist of this resolution. I would, and I'm gonna talk about these folks in my presentation next here, but I'd like to ask the women in leadership for the city of Sacramento, who have helped me with this effort since last September, to come forward and accept this resolution on behalf of all the women in Sacramento, and then we'll take a quick picture and move on with presentation. Is that okay, Mayor?
Of course, yeah. Thank you. Do you want the entire, how do you want to do this one? You want us?
All right.
So, are we waiting for public comment until we finish both items and/or council comment? What would you prefer?
I think we can just put them together. I think that would be fine.
Let's put them together, then I know I want to say a few things, and I know we have some public comment.
Sure.
Let's go to the next one, please.
Let's work my way through the rest of it here. And, okay, so the next piece, so first of all, thanks to those ladies, I really appreciate you being here, and I appreciate your indulgences to talk one more time about pay equity until we get it right. All right, next up would be our Gender Equity Update, and so I just want to make sure we have a chance to brief you. In September of 2016, my office issued the city's first report card on gender parity for the city of Sacramento, and at that time, we made three key recommendations and one ongoing commitment, and I promised to come back quarterly and give updates on where we are with those items. The first was the culture and networking, and this is promoting mentorships, networking opportunities with city staff. One of the things was to formalize the women's leadership group, which we have absolutely done, and put them in hyperdrive in a leadership role in the city of Sacramento, building public and private partnerships inside and out of the city, organizing workshops, developing speaker series focused on women, and creating executive leadership trainings, professional work environment for the city of Sacramento. That has certainly moved at lightning speed. The next item that we recommended and this council approved was an Office of Organizational Development. That has already been implemented. The city has hired two positions and moved forward. It is a professional development opportunity that allows people in the city of Sacramento, men and women, to cross-develop themselves professionally and therefore move up and have opportunities to learn programming and a little bit outside the scope of whatever their general day-to-day duties are. This department lives in our Human Resources Division and has been up and running for several months and has already been worth its weight in gold. The third piece was, this council approved the hiring of a Diversity and Equity Manager, which will be a person who focuses on achieving our set goals for equity and diversity in hiring in the city of Sacramento. The Human Resources Department under Melissa has done a wonderful job. They are actually doing their final interviews this month.
First interview?
First interview, oh, first interview, oh, sorry. Sorry. First round of interviews this month, so we expect to have that position on before too long. They do have a great pool, and I think that that will be something that is very exciting for us. Sorry, Melissa, I misstate that there. All right, so since September, these are the actions that have been taken. That Office of Organizational Development has been implemented. We're farther along on the Diversity Equity Manager hire, expect to have that position in place before long. And we hosted, as you all know, McKinsey Global Institute here on January 19th that was cosponsored by VSP, which is important because it begins to build on the outside partnerships. We talked about the advancement of women's equality and its global impact, which is $12 trillion. That entire presentation, video, reports, and everything that went along with it is available on my website. It was livestreamed at the time, we captured it, and so anyone who's interested in seeing that presentation from McKinsey Global, it does break down diversity and equity on there. And then on the 24th of January, we did a council presentation, Mayor, as it was one of your top 10 priorities, so happened in your first, I think, three or four weeks. And at that time, this council took a resolution to address gender pay equity. We moved that forward unanimously with the support of this council, and we identified where this would live, which is in the Independent Budget Analyst Office, who will help me put together the report card annually, along with the Diversity and Equity Manager, once that person is hired. In March of '27, which, by the way, March was Women's History Month, I personally highlighted a different woman every day of March in Sacramento that is an achiever, and put them out for the world on social media. We also worked with other partners, like the Sacramento Kings, and they, by the way, you'd be very proud of your Sacramento Kings, they are number one, I'm gonna give them one number one in the NBA, I can't help them with the other, but they are number one in the NBA for women in executive management.
Great.
They are also the first NBA team to hire a woman on their coaching staff, so they are actually ahead of the curve in their area. And when I got in contact with them and asked them what night they would be honoring women, they obliged, and they chose March 27th. They dedicated the game to women and called it Women of Influence. They hosted the City of Sacramento Women's Leadership Team for our mixer in the city suite, which was very rewarding, and recognized the ladies who work hard for City of Sacramento. And they also handed out awards, or I did, in conjunction with them, to three women in this community who are women of influence. One, receiving the Legacy Award, was Sister Libby Fernandez. Receiving the Current Women of Influence Award was one of your favorite people, Justice Tawny Cantil. And one, Future Woman of Influence, who's doing great things now, but we all see as a serious climber, is Rhonda Staley Brooks. We also have set up a Cap to Cap event for women. This will be all the business leaders and elected officials in the region who will be heading back to Cap to Cap to represent the city of Sacramento and the greater region. We will host a networked mixer back there on April 29th. And we are beginning to work with some of our employment unions, starting first with the Firefighters Local 522, to do hiring events and mixers. This one is called Women of Fire Mixer. We will take all of the women who work in fire in the greater region, host a mixer, and begin to have them network and explain to us what the obstacles and hurdles are for advancement and hiring in those departments. Chose fire first because they, as you can see on the infographic, are the most challenged in terms of equity in hiring in their department across the city of Sacramento, but I will hit the others in turn as well. The ongoing networking commitment is basically for the Women's Leadership Group of the city of Sacramento to stay way out in front in a city leadership role and provide an example to the businesses, private or otherwise, in our region, looking to how we do best practices in moving women forward. Which brings me to my next item, Mayor, which is what's next for the city of Sacramento, an item that you challenged me with to keep at the forefront of everyone's minds and some specific deliverables. The first on my what's next list, in addition to the ongoing work with the networking, is a web portal, and I'm going to ask the city clerks office and the Office of Information Technology, Maria, to work with me on this. We'd like to see a web portal that is interactive, this was also feedback, by the way, from the women at the McKinsey Group, that allows people from the outside to see how the city of Sacramento is leading, how women can engage. As you know, really after the volume of interest based on the march, people are looking for a way to engage. This would be a place where the city of Sacramento can put information so that people can, for example, the livestream McKinsey report, or if we're going to do a committee or a commission, or there's a hearing like this, how folks can engage and be a part of all of that effort, and also how women that work in the city can look to get involved in networking and mixers, and give people on the outside an opportunity to engage in, so contracting opportunities or whatnot for women to engage. That web portal will be useful. It will also be where the report cards live and any audits, like the one coming forward or the previous one, that people could access easily that information. Second, what's next is implement the recommendations of the auditor, which you will hear today. Maybe he won't toot his own horn, but he and his team did an extraordinarily heavy lift to produce this audit for you. First of all, in rapid-fire pace, I think I gave them a copious one month to do this, but on top of that, the information didn't really exist to gather gender and equity information across our boards and commissions. It's not succinctly saved somewhere, and so I am asking... an item that you challenged me with to keep at the forefront of everyone's minds and some specific deliverables. The first on my what's next list, in addition to the ongoing work with the networking, is a web portal, and I'm going to ask the city clerk's office and the Office of Information Technology, Maria, to work with me on this. We'd like to see a web portal that is interactive, this was also feedback, by the way, from the women at the McKinsey Group, that allows people from the outside to see how the city of Sacramento is leading, how women can engage. As you know, really after the volume of interest based on the march, people are looking for a way to engage. This would be a place where the city of Sacramento can put information so that people can, for example, the livestream McKinsey report, or if we're going to do a committee or a commission, or there's a hearing like this, how folks can engage and be a part of all of that effort, and also how women that work in the city can look to get involved in networking and mixers, and give people on the outside an opportunity to engage in, so contracting opportunities or whatnot for women to engage. That web portal will be useful. It will also be where the report cards live and any audits, like the one coming forward or the previous one, that people could access easily that information. Second what's next is implement the recommendations of the auditor, which you will hear today. Maybe he won't toot his own horn, but he and his team did an extraordinarily heavy lift to produce this audit for you. First of all, in rapid-fire pace, I think I gave them a copious one month to do this, but on top of that, the information didn't really exist to gather gender and equity information across our boards and commissions. It's not succinctly saved somewhere, and so I am asking the auditor to really work with the city attorney, because it is a legal issue as to how this information is gathered, on a better system so that we can produce this report card and these audits on a more regular basis and have not quite the same task that our auditor's office and my office faced in acquiring this important information as we look to make sure that the city is served. So that's item number two. And item number three, and I mentioned this to my colleagues, and I'm not asking for a vote on this tonight, but I am asking the city manager to come, help me come back with a recommendation to this body on the establishment of a Sacramento Commission on Gender Equity. This would integrate gender equity principles into citywide operations. This is not something we can do until we have the diversity and equity manager in place because that person, in collaboration with the independent budget analyst, would work with this group to produce annually the report card and track some of these audits that are happening. It would obviously be a commission that mixes some electeds with leaders in the community who are hard at work on these women's issues and would allow us the opportunity to give people a place for input and dialogue so that as we move this forward, we can see noted marks in our progress, so we want to set particular benchmarks. The composition of that obviously would be appointments through the council, probably the PNP E process, but I will need the city manager's office to work with my team on the specifics. We have an outline, but I think it'll need a little bit of cleaning up. All right, that's it for my report. I'd like to now introduce, would you want to have comments? No, we'll do it all together. So first, we'll bring the auditor up. This is a relatively short report on the audit. Jorge, if you want to come up. And as he's coming up, I'd like to thank a few people who helped him, and I know he'll do the same, but where is Farishta? Would you stand up for a minute, Farishta? So I, she's going to kill me for telling this story, but first of all, she did most of this audit, of course, under the supervision of Jorge. She had help in Abir Hajar, she helped her, but she's not available to be here today. Mayor, very proud of this young lady. Not only did she lead this for the city, and is she here tonight, but how old are they? She has six-month twin babies.
My.
So in true
Girls.
Gender, yeah, girls, so we're doing this for them, right? In true gender equity form, she did this work for the city of Sacramento to help us progress, and she got a babysitter tonight, worked all day today for the city, and is here tonight to see it all the way through. She did a phenomenal job. She's a superstar in Jorge's office, and I just wanted everyone to see her and thank her.
Thank you.
And in my office, Kevin Green and David Bishop, who's in the back, did a lot of hard work. He is a couple of months to graduating from UC Davis intern in my office, and Isabel Gayard, who you saw earlier up with the infographic. And then I also would like to thank the city clerk and Wendy Clock Johnson in her office and their team, because as I said, this was a bit of a hunt, a bit of a chase, to get the information. So Jorge, would you walk us through your audit, please?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilmember Ashby, for that very nice introduction. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. Jorge Seguera, your city auditor. With me tonight, as you've already met, is Farishta Horari, who was primarily responsible for completing this assignment. The recommendation that is before you is that you pass a motion approving the city auditor's diversity assessment of boards, commissions, and committees. Just as some quick background, on January 24th, the city council directed the city auditor to assess the diversity of the city of Sacramento's boards, committees, commissions, and to compare the results to the demographics of the city of Sacramento residents. The assessment was to include the city's boards, committees, and commission members, demographics related to age, ethnicity, gender, and sexual orientation. Based on the information we reviewed, there were a total of 256 seats, of which 194 are city-appointed. During our initial data collection process, the city clerk informed us that they only keep track of application information on city-appointed board members and did not have applications of members appointed by other agencies. Of those that the city did have information for, due to some of the information categories being voluntary, many of the city-appointed members' information was incomplete. In order to analyze more complete information, we surveyed members to gather information that would allow us to analyze more complete data. Our survey was voluntary, and as a result, we did not receive survey responses from all members. We spoke with some board member contacts and others who knew the members to identify gender information of some of the members. Our final dataset consisted of information gathered through a combination of the city clerk's provided information, survey responses, and interviews. To determine the demographics of city of Sacramento residents, we used projections from citidata.com, the Environmental System Research Institute, geographic information systems, software. Now, I recognize that this assessment was performed using incomplete data and that some of our methodologies were not ideal. However, I believe this assessment provides valuable data and metrics that can be used to establish a baseline level of diversity that can be monitored for trends and direction in the future. For this report, we had four chapters and made one recommendation. The first chapter acknowledges the necessary data that was not readily available, and as a result, required additional efforts to compile more complete data. If the city is interested in conducting this kind of review regularly, data collection improvements will be necessary. By improving the city data collection methodologies, the city will be better positioned to expeditiously analyze and monitor trends and changes in the overall composition of boards, committees, and commissions. The second chapter of this report focuses on the demographics of Sacramento residents. The city of Sacramento has a population of approximately 490,000. The top three most populous ethnic groups in the city of Sacramento are white at 31.7%, Hispanic at 30.6%, and Asian at 18%. City residents are approximately 51.6% female and 48.4% male. The city has an estimated median age of 34 years old. According to a Gallup poll released in March of 2015, 3.9% of the population of the Sacramento metropolitan area, which includes areas such as Roseville and Arden Arcade, is estimated to identify as LGBT. The third chapter delves into the diversity statistics of the boards, committees, and commissions. These two tables summarize the ethnic breakdown of our boards, committees, and commissions. The first table notes the percentage based on the 229 filled seats. The second table shows the percentage based on the 178 individuals that we had responses for. As highlighted in these tables, the largest disparity between city residents and the boards, committees, and commissions are in the white, Hispanic, and Asian Pacific Islander These two tables summarize the gender breakdown of our boards, committees, and commissions. The first table notes the percentage based on the 229 filled seats. The second table shows the percentage based on the 217 individuals that we had responses for. As shown on this table, approximately 40% of the members are female and 60% are male.
Jorge, can I stop you on that slide for just a moment? So one of the things that he did in the report, but is not in this PowerPoint that I would like the council to see is, as we know, the committees and commissions have different charges, and one of the, one or maybe two of the commissions, the Planning Commission and the Parks Commission, have direct appointments from us and are known to be a place where future elected officials will start, dip their toe in the water, and see how they're going to do. So I asked specifically for us to look at those two commissions for their gender makeup, and I just want to share it with the group. If you can see it on there, the Planning Commission is 23% female. That is in part because there are three women on there. One is my appointment, and the other two are appointments that I championed through PNP E process so that there would be three women on there. In the Parks Division, there is only 22% of that committee or commission is female. There are other commissions, like SMAC, the Arts Commission, is 50/50. The Utility Rates Advisory Commission, which is, as you know, helps set the rates for utilities, is 14% female and 86% male. And lest you think they are all totally male-dominated, the Measure U Oversight Committee is 100% female, so it was also, though, 100% appointed by the PNP E Committee, which, again, I have worked hard to champion women through to fill our committees and commissions. So we have some work to do on the committees and commissions, but in particular, the committees and commissions that help set the stage for young or next-level folks to then step into these council seats or into school board seats or other seats. Thank you, Jorge. Go back to your presentation.
The next graphic
You're getting to the last graph, is this the last graph here?
No, we've got just a couple more.
Okay.
Almost done.
No, I mean, it's important. I just want you to
Okay, sure, sure. The next couple ones move a little faster. On this table, we show the gender breakdown by ethnic group for the 217 boards and commissions. On this pie chart, this details the 54 responses by members to our survey question on sexual orientation. As previously mentioned, the Gallup poll released in 2015 showed that the metropolitan area had approximately 3.9% of the individuals identifying as LGBT. If we apply the 11 individuals to the total amount of board member seats, which is 256, we extrapolate that approximately 4.3% of the seats available have identified as LGBT. In our last chapter, we tried to illustrate the geographic diversity of our members, given the city of Sacramento's rich diversity in neighborhoods with their variety of lifestyle choices and perspectives. It may be of interest to the city to monitor the composition of the various boards, commissions, and committees to determine if adequate neighborhood representation exists. So with that said, we included several maps in this report. On this particular map, we note the location of approximately 168 members that we were able to map by obtaining their addresses. As you can see on this map, three council districts with the highest number of mappable members were council districts four with 49 members, council districts three with 24 members, and council district five with 22 members. The three council districts with the lowest number of mappable members were council districts two with seven, council member, council district six with eight, and council district eight with 10. Now, keep in mind that we were not able to map all members, but nonetheless, this should give us a good sense of where our highest concentration of members are coming from. This particular map is the same information, however, it's broken up by gender, and our last map shows an example of what our maps look like when we separate it out by smaller groups of boards and commissions. I would like to thank the city clerk's office, the city IT's GIS Division, the city attorney's office, council district one, and all of those that helped us quickly compile this information for this analysis. I would like to also offer a special thanks to our intern, Abir Hajar, for her assistance on this audit. That concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
Mayor, I'm happy to hand it back to you. Jorge, thank you for that presentation. This item, the infographic, which is, which was down there and up on the screen, if folks are interested in it, I did bring some copies, and they're up here on this table, right on the edge, so feel free to help yourself to them, and that's it from me. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Ashby, for a very thorough presentation, but for your dogged leadership on these sets of issues. I think it's great, frankly, that this has now come before us twice in the first three and a half months of my tenure. And so I'm struck with a lot of thoughts here, and thank you, Mr. City Auditor, it was very good and very thorough, but the numbers are really disappointing, and do reflect how far we have to go, and I think when you sum it all up, there's only one question that really matters, and that is, what's it going to take to move these numbers? I mean, both boards and commissions and within our city departments. And I want to work with Councilmember Carr and the PNP E Committee, because, you know, ultimately, I guess the PNP E recommendations come to the mayor here. We have got to make it our mission here over the course of this next year to move these numbers, not just on the gender side, but didn't emphasize it quite as much, but according to the survey, the Latino population is dramatically underrepresented when it comes to boards and commissions. And the same here with the city staff. What's it going to take to move this? The other thing that's of concern to me is what you've pointed out through your research and through the audit here as well, is that technologically and reporting-wise, we don't really have a easy-to-access, systematic, ready, readily-updated progress report on these things. We sort of have to, you have to make the request, and everybody works overtime, thank you, by the way, for all of that, you know, in order to produce a report in a month's notice, as opposed to this sort of being readily updated and readily accessible. I almost think, and it's not like a scarlet letter kind of thing, but it's almost like I think that these not, that these reports, if you will, ought to be like posted the way we post our agendas every week, you know, in a publicly accessible way, out in the lobby here, so that every week we walk in here and we see these numbers, not to shame anybody, but just to remind us together how, how much work we have to do here. I mean, you're bringing a great sense of urgency to this. I'd like to see a collective sense of urgency here throughout the city with a constant reminder of these numbers, a constant updating of the progress we're making, and if we're not making the progress, let that have, let that be reflected out in the public square here and on the internet in a readily accessible way, because otherwise, we're gonna, we're gonna have very important hearings like this, and then we're going to go back to our business. It's got to be a weekly thing. I don't mean there needs to be a weekly presentation before council, but there ought to be a quarterly presentation before council, not just on gender, but on race and ethnicity as well. So I want to just make sure that we're, we take all this important work and we focus it, what only, the only thing that matters here in the end are the, that these numbers improve, because we're way, because, sorry, we're way out of whack here, and these are, and we're way out of whack in the traditionally male professions, police, fire, public utilities, public works, excuse me, finance, thank you, is do, you know, kind of defying the stereo, you know, I think maybe common stereotype. So thank you. Got work to do. Jay?
Thanks, Mayor. Just real briefly, so, thank you. I think this is great work. I think it's really important, and I want to agree with what the mayor said. I think we need to make this very public. I think the commission is a really good idea. Hopefully, it puts itself out of business at some point, but that's going to take a while. You know, as we see numbers, that's going to remind us on an ongoing basis. There are some things, obviously, that we have control over when it's fully a city commission or board. We have other boards that we serve on. I serve on SECOG. We have 28 men, three women. Of course, they're all named Susan, so there's only women who are named Susan on the SECOG board. It's kind of an interesting piece, but, and I know as we were putting together our subcommittees, it was like we wanted some diversity in all ways, and there was no diversity in any way in any of them. So I think that we can really lead by example here, and just want to help as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, you tasked Councilmember Jennings and I to look at a policy on ethnic diversity as well as gender equity, and we are fashioning those. I believe that accountability is what's in order.
That's what I'm saying.
The first step in accountability is for the council to state exactly what the outcome is that we're looking for, and then, once we have stated that, to measure that and monitor that on a routine basis. And these type of numbers don't change very rapidly. They change probably at the rate of attrition of the city staff, so there aren't going to be wide swings from week to week. But what we should see, after we make our outcome, desirable outcome known, what we should see is a glide path, a glide path that's headed in the direction
What?
A glide path, like an airplane gliding. We should see a glide path that we are making progress towards the outcome that we are looking for as a city. So we'll be bringing that policy forward So we'll be bringing that policy forward, I guess, through law and ledge at some point.
Beginning of May, as I understand, the ethnic and race report, Vice Mayor Jennings...
And that'll be the first, that'll be the first part of it. Here is what we are seeing as a council we want our city staff to look like. And we should also hold our own sales account, but we should look at our offices, the people that we hire. Are we hiring people ethnically diverse, and are we taking into account the genders that we're hiring? So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Carr. And again, through P&amp;P E, I think we want to have a discussion about, you know, looking at openings on boards and commissions more through these filters, so that we're conscious of diversity, and not just, and I would add one other element to diversity that the auditor's report brings out, and that's geographic diversity. I mean, you've got city council districts here that are underrepresented on boards and commissions, and sometimes that correlates with the neighborhoods of, with higher numbers of racial, ethnic minorities as well. All this sort of fits together.
Yeah, a lot of it is tied up in the outreach.
Yeah.
When you have an outreach program that only communicates through computers, then you put certain neighborhoods at a disadvantage.
Well, that need, that's another thing that needs to change. Councilmember Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I wanted to thank Councilwoman Ashby for her advocacy on behalf of this very important issue. Also, I want to thank the city auditor for doing an excellent job. And I just want to point out that, you know, we've recognized that this issue is an issue that it didn't just start, you know, recently. This has been something that has taken place over a matter of years, and it is my belief, and I think probably most of the council, that in order to really address this, when we have opportunities to put structural things in place, we do it on the front end, so we, you know, don't always have to play catch-up. And I would just table this, or actually just bring up, I mean, we have several other items on the agenda tonight that I think there's going to be some additional concerns just about equity, about diversity, and, you know, opportunity for residents in our city to participate, and that's the marijuana discussion, too. So we should not lose sight of the challenges that we've had already as it relates to hiring boards and commissions. And now, we have this other big issue coming up, so we should be mindful of the challenges that that might also have as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, ditto. Thank you, Angelique and Jorge. Laney, could I ask you a question? I'm wondering, the piece about gender pay equity is of great concern to me, because it's just not right. And I'm wondering, do you know, do you feel that there are any gender pay equity issues in the city of Sacramento? And if so, can you sort of point to what the causes might be and how we fix it as soon as possible?
I can't speak to anything off the top of my head right now. I think that's certainly something that we could ask our department to look into and identify the issues that might have led to those situations. Sometimes, it's just a different appointing authority and different practices that might lead to that across the city, but certainly something we can look into.
Just if I could help her out a little bit?
Go ahead.
Laney has been instrumental in helping mentor many women here, and I think one thing we learned in the audit, and it is reflected in this bottom right-hand category, is that there are a couple things that happen to women in the city of Sacramento. When we hire at the starting level, entry-level positions, women actually outnumber men. So we start with more women, but as they move up, they don't make the same pay cut. Interestingly, the management, when you just say manager, are you a manager? They're still fairly equal, but their pay is not. So they're staying at the bottom of a pay scale, and/or they're not making it to that next management level where they would get higher pay. So the women that we have that are managers are primarily in lower level or lower pay management positions, although they have still made it to manager, they are not being paid at the same rate. So they're, one of the things that Melissa and Laney and, I think Jorge, and I all recommended as a result of the last audit, was that when the diversity and equity manager comes on, they are going to look at things like people who are working out of classification and management studies on whether or not there is implicit bias in that hiring process, and also if managers in some departments where there are traditionally more women are being paid lower than other areas where those same managers would be in other positions.
So that's at the heart of what I'm getting at, you know, things like implicit bias, or, you know, exactly why, if it's not a performance issue, what other factors might keep women from getting equal pay for equal work? And I think that we really need to focus on drilling down and understand if we have any of those issues in the city of Sacramento.
That is a core component that will be tasked to the diversity and equity manager upon hiring.
Perfect. Thank you.
Ashby?
Mayor, do we have public comment on this item?
We do.
Okay, well, at the appropriate time, I'd like to make a motion to accept the audit and move forward the...
Okay. Let's hear from the public.
Okay, we have two people that have signed up to speak. For item number 23, it's Betty Williams, and for item number 24, it's James Clark.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you, Councilmember Ashby, for bringing that report. My name is Betty Williams. I'm the president of the Greater Sacramento NAACP, and I'm here this evening to address the equal pay work issue. Women are a significant part of the workforce and economically in every state and country. As already stated, the most common stat cited on equal pay is that women make 80 cents for every man's dollar. But that's not true for all women. Black women make 65 cents on the dollar, and Hispanic women, 58 cents on the dollar. Asian Pacific Islanders and Native American women are not considered statistically significant to even be included in the stats. Most of the fight for equal pay seems to be for women at the top of the pay scale. Women of color are disproportionately affected by the gender wage gap. The primary drivers of the gap, of the wage gap, are minimum wage, wages, and legal protection in female-dominated industries, and barriers to entry for women in traditionally male-dominated industries. The loss in lifetime is $530,000 with less than a college degree, or over $800,000 for a college-educated woman. And the current trend continues, if it continues, Hispanic women will wait 232 years for pay equity, and black women will wait 108 years. This Institute for Women's Policy Research say women wouldn't receive equal pay until 2059. We need to stop supporting legislation to close the equal pay gap and develop a support legislation and practices that eliminate the gap, simply stated, equal pay for equal work. There are things that all women go through, and there are things that all minority women go through. This work requires solidarity, and to separate women of color from the equation will just continue the struggle. Thank you.
Very much, Betty.
Pega?
Thank you. Clark?
So, I really like her commentary on that. It's very important, because that is part of the issue with diversity. And I did notice that on the gender aspect, there was no mention of alternative gender identities. That's something that should be looked into, too, because not everybody identifies as just male or female. So as, looking into diversity, I think that's going to be a very important thing. And I do appreciate the council addressing the issue of diversity within the city. It's very important. It's kind of disturbing when you see the, you know, the numbers are way off compared to what the actual percentages of population is. And I'm hoping in the near future that we will be seeing that change. So I just want to say, I do appreciate the council's efforts in actually trying to address that. We look for, I'm going to look forward to seeing these changes and implementations take place, and just make sure that we include everybody in the diversity pool, and not just focus on specific groups only, because that's, you create other gaps when you leave out certain parts of the population. So, thank you.
Good reminder. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. And again, not the last word here. Continuing discussion. Thank you again. All in favor of receiving the report, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Abstain. The measure passes. Thank you very much. Okay, let us now move on to file item 16.
This is the Bruceville Terrace Residential Subdivision. It's a public hearing.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, and members of the Sacramento City Council. My name is Garrett Norman, and I am an assistant planner in the Community Development Department, who is a project planner for the Bruceville Terrace Residential Subdivision Project, file number P-16-025. Before you this evening is a request to subdivide a vacant net acre parcel for the construction of 85 single-unit dwellings within the multi-unit dwelling and review zone, or R2BR zone. The project is located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Bruceville Road and Jacinto Road. The requested entitlements include a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring plan, a general plan amendment from the suburban neighborhood high-density designation to the suburban neighborhood medium-density designation, a tentative subdivision map and subdivision modification, a conditional use permit to establish a gated residential development, and site plan and design review of the tentative map, unit layout, and house plans. The Planning and Design Commission passed a recommendation to the city council to approve the project. The motion passed with 11 ayes, one no, and one member was absent. A supplemental has been prepared for this project. It was noted by a community member that the mitigation measure 9-1 of the mitigation monitoring plan inadvertently noted school impact fee shall be paid to the Sacramento City Unified School District. This error has been fixed to reflect the correct school district of Elk Grove Unified. Staff supports this project because it is consistent with the zoning designation and the goals of the general plan, that include diversifying housing choices in the area, providing move-up homeownership opportunities, providing a high-quality design, and developing an underutilized parcel in an urban area. Staff recommends the city council approve the project, adopting the resolutions attached to the staff report. And now, I'll turn it over to the applicant, Mr. Mark Wees, to do a very brief presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Wees, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Steinberg, members of the council. Mark Wees, on behalf of the owner and sponsor, Steve Ayers. Steve and I have been tracking this project, I think he's owned it for about a dozen years now, or this property, in trying to find the right mix that worked well with it, going through recession and a variety of things. So I'll try and be briefer than that, but there's, what we've come to is what we feel is a real balance with what we're calling now, just as a project named Bruceville Terrace. As Garrett stated, it's 85 homes. It will be a planned development, HOA managed. It is intended to be a gated community. We've worked closely with staff, and I commend Garrett and all the team, Antonio and the East, on how we came to resolutions on everything without having to require or request a single variance between setbacks, road widths, accommodating all of that. We've also had several outreach meetings with the community, where Steve and I and Brian Holloway and several attended. The first was with the North Laguna Creek Neighborhood and Community Neighborhood Association, and Mr. Alan Barron, where they, we presented the project to that community association and talked about a variety of things, walls and community traffic and a variety of things. And then, we had another follow-up meeting with the residents that lived immediately to the west of us, that was hosted and organized by Pat Shelby and Kim Garrett. And there, we addressed a variety of issues, too, and concerns, and basically, each time we go in, we go into communities to be a good neighbor, we plan to be there for a long time, whether we specifically are building it, or we're, or it's part of our legacy. A couple of things that we've agreed to with is keeping dialogue open on the immediate wall that is the western boundary, that is a brick wall that backs up to, that is the backyard wall to our western neighbors, and how to accommodate, utilize that wall, build it up, as we will have some height changes. Should there be consideration needed for increasing it or encroaching on those homes, we will consider, we will work with the neighbors on that. We also talked about how to do some traffic calming measures, working with city transportation, working with the school district. There's a vacant property that is pretty much a throwaway site that is privately owned. We've agreed to talk with that owner, work with the community to see if we can do some gardening or some landscape enhancement. And we've literally followed all the necessary items to get the project to this point, and appreciate staff and everyone's help.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Councilmember Carr, do you want to take the public testimony first? Why don't we hear the public testimony, and we'll turn it over to Councilmember Carr. Thank you.
Okay, we have three that have signed up to speak. It's Pat Shelby, Kim Garrett, and Tony Davis.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, City Council. Kim Garrett, at the request of the Dartford Drive neighbors, whose properties border this project, I facilitated a meeting with these residents and the project proponents on February 21st at the Barbara Comstock Morris Elementary School. The attendees of that meeting included the school principal, Kilo Lo Yumi. Of the 11 homes that border the project, eight participated. One was out of town, and one was debriefed the following morning. All support the project, but have asked that I provide to you a little bit of information they would like for you to know. One, they want only one wall, to make sure that you understand, they do not want to have two walls with the project. And to condition the project to keep the existing masonry brick wall that borders the western side of the project, and it makes up for their back property line for all the Dartford Drive residents. And to make sure that residents are provided an opportunity to review any amending of the fence by height or by design, as discussed with the residents during this meeting at Barbara Comstock Morris. Another item, which the applicant has briefly mentioned, this was of concern to Principal Umi, which was the southeast corner at Jacinto and Dartford, which is unsightly and also proposes a safety hazard for students and pedestrians, to work with the existing property owner to beautify that corner. And so with that, I'd like to conclude, and if I may. Councilmember Ashby, you are the only woman on the council, and I just want to say, you represent us well. Thank you very much.
Very nice. Thank you, Ms. Garrett.
Thank you very much, Mayor Steinberg, councilmembers, Mr. Carr. I am Patricia Shelby, and I live in District 8, a resident on Dartford Drive. The reason that our neighbors asked for that secondary meeting, we did not become aware of the project until the 10-day noticing that was posted on the field. And our notice, our written notice came about seven days before the project. Anyway, we worked very well with the applicant. Mr. Wees was very responsive, and upon reading the project, I thank you for your attention to the mitigating and monitoring. Our boilerplate evidently forgets Elk Grove Unified School District, and that may affect other of you in other districts who have other schools. But SAC Unified School District seems to be the go-to district for school funds to go to first, so make sure your school districts get their money. So, the one item that was left over, we are concerned about the 40-foot setback. We had talked about the sound, about how high the wall should be along Bruceville Road. At Planning Commission, they told us that a sound study would have to take place, but initially, it was only a six-foot wall. We said that was far too low for the sound and the noise, but that would come. But there's a 40-foot setback for light rail. As we know, we're only a block away from the college parking lot and the station, so we know that there will not be a station there, but we still have that property set aside. The prior project at, that runs along Dartford, excuse me, runs along Bruceville Road at Staccato, Damascus, and Forte, the developers kept the property looking very nice in that 40- But there's a forty-foot setback for light rail. As we know, we're only a block away from the college parking lot and the station, so we know that there will not be a station there, but we still have that property set aside. The prior project at that runs along Dartford, excuse me, runs along Bruceville Road at Staccato, Damascus, and Forte, the developers kept the property looking very nice in that forty-foot right-of-way while they were selling the projects. But upon the conclusion, there was no arrangement made for the maintenance of that. We have asked that the city please condition that this project will create, as part of their HOA, a lighting and landscaping maintenance of that. Once light rail takes it over, that can be done away with. But we, right now, we have weeds at Forte along Bruceville Road that are taller than I am.
Okay.
I didn't feel like I needed to bring you the pictures, but that's a problem, and light rail and RT does not take care of that property.
Okay. Let us hear Mr. Carr's, Councilmember Carr's response. Do we have another witness?
No.
No, that's it? Okay. Councilmember Carr?
No, I'm sorry, we do.
No, he's not here.
Oh, so he's not here?
Not here, okay. So Councilmember Carr then.
Sorry. Go ahead, Councilmember Carr. Tony.
It's okay. Larry, you're up.
Garrett, a couple of questions. Where do we end up on the wall?
Are you asking a question of?
Say again?
Who are you directing the question? Oh, to the staff? Okay, go ahead.
On the Bruceville wall, we, based on the Planning and Design Commission recommendation, they modified a condition to have the wall set at a minimum of six feet, but they will conduct the sound study, and the sound study will determine the appropriate height of that wall.
Are we talking about the wall on the east side or the west side?
On the west, on the east side, on Bruceville.
On Bruceville. So say that again?
The Planning and Design Commission modified a condition to set the minimum wall height at six feet, and then they will conduct the sound study, and the sound study will determine the appropriate height of the wall.
And what about the wall on the west side?
On the west side, there was no formal condition placed on the project about that.
When we went to the neighborhood meeting, did the developer agree to work with the neighbors on that west wall on the west side?
From my understanding, yes, the developer did agree to work with the neighbors on that.
But it's not included in the conditional use permit?
No.
Better hear from the developer, maybe.
Councilmember Carr, yeah, at the meeting, we discussed as far as the eastern wall along the right-of-way, we would work, you know, it was, no one really disagreed with a wall being needed. At Planning Commission, it was discussed based on having the noise study, the sound study, to determine mitigating factors. Now, you have a lot of things that can happen. We're not backing off the wall. The wall will be put in, but it's a matter of what is the best design or best height of the wall. Building envelopes are, with today's conditions, are very soundproof dual-pane windows. It's not just a wall that doesn't sound, it's really the membrane of the home or the perimeter of the home. Also, these, we're taking care of a drainage issue. Everything's going to be draining inward into the property, so the perimeter will be roughly a foot higher than it is now. So a foot higher than the forty-foot right-of-way as we're building it up. So on one side, it may actually look seven feet. On the house side, it'll look six feet. And we wouldn't really want to go much over six feet because we have limited backyard space. You get a high wall there, it's just going to look ominous to that back wall of that homeowner.
Okay. Could you put the picture of the project back up so other councilmembers who aren't familiar with it can see what we're talking about? So on the, the project is outlined in the dotted yellow. The wall that we're talking about on the east side runs behind the project, and that strip of land is owned by Regional Transit. And RT, even though they have rights to the land, do not maintain it. They are planning to, at some point, maybe run a track all the way down to Elk Grove so that land is being reserved for that. In the meantime, RT, the developer has to maintain that property. On the backside of the project, on the west side to your left, those houses that are backed right into an existing housing complex. And I think Pat lives over there. So the wall that's going back on the east side, have we come to agreement with the neighbors how that wall would be constructed?
We've come to an agreement to come to an agreement.
Say again?
We have an agreement to agree. The best I can come up with, the best we can offer right now, we're going to be, we're talking about the western boundary wall here, there's eleven homes affected by it. It is a, it's a solid brick wall fence. It's six-foot on their backyard. Again, we're going to have the same issue that we're raising elevation up in order to take care of grade and drainage. We're also helping take care of a drainage problem that's going on there right now. But, so you're looking at a backyard on one side that they're looking at a six-foot fence. Our homes will be built, they'll be in elevation. We have to be very respectful of viewing in, whether we do landscaping with some sort of trees or the sort of thing, or we build up the wall, the fence a little more. Now, I agree with Ms. Shelby that we don't want to have two walls with a six-inch, one-foot, whatever buffer that becomes a garbage and rodent haven. So it's a matter of looking at the wall, looking at the integrity of it, can it add more height to it without jeopardizing that integrity? And agreeing on aesthetics and then how to handle it. So that's why I'm saying we agree to agree.
Okay, so you'll have to work that out?
But if we approve the project tonight, what's the guarantee that it's going to be worked out? Because that's always, I mean, I haven't done this land use stuff up here for about twenty years, but that's what I always remember. It's like, how much, how much good faith, you know, goes into a good working relationship between project applicant and the neighborhood? How much has to be written in, you know, in stone beforehand? I think that's what Ms. Shelby, I've known for a long time, is asking here. How do we, I mean?
And I thank you for bringing that up. That is our question. And primarily, I have faith in him, but what if it sells to someone else? There is still a for sale sign up on that property.
Okay, so what's the answer to that one?
Garrett?
Well, I heard two things as part of this discussion. One is prohibiting a second wall. That would have to be something that Mr. Weiss would have to agree to as a developer. I don't know if they've made that decision or not. The other thing we could do is have a condition that they do coordinate with the neighbors on the final design of that wall, and the final design could be subject to staff review prior to issuance of the final permits for building.
Do you be okay with that, Mr. Weiss? Ms. Shelby?
Yes.
Okay. Problem solved. Good.
Could you restate what's going to be added to the condition?
So it would be a two-part condition. One is that the developer would agree not to build a second wall. The other part would be that the developer would coordinate with the neighbors in designing that wall, and the final design would be subject to staff review, and we would check for both design and also that they've coordinated with the neighbors.
For the permit was finally issued?
Are we right with that?
Yes.
A second issue was raised about the southeast corner?
Oh, well, come on up, hon. In our, in our discussions and our meetings and also with Mr. Barron and the Community Association, the, you know, it's sitting here, it's a privately-owned piece. It doesn't get landscaped. They do weed abatement as city ordinances call for, but it's kind of a dead zone. And so the idea is, could we talk about doing some community enhancement collectively with the neighborhood? We're going to be doing a drought-tolerant vegetation on the forty-foot right-of-way until it's dedicated to RT and maintaining it with the association that's maintaining the subdivision. We could offer some resources to help offset that. It would be a very low maintenance landscaping, could be pleasing. I wouldn't go so far as doing a full-blown little dog park or anything, and I'd be, you know, putting a structure up would probably be concerning with blocking views and traffic, but at least doing some community enhancement to that lot, we would be supportive of participating in.
So how do we structure that in the permit? Antonio?
For that portion, it would be difficult because they don't own that portion. We don't want to condition a project to do improvements to property that they don't own.
But would we condition that the HOA does maintain the forty-foot right-of-way? Because right now, that's not in anything.
I think it's automatic, I'm sorry, because we control that until we don't. But I'm fine with that, too.
I'm with that, too. Okay?
Okay. I think those were the issues that I heard.
That's it. That's it. That's what you call working together. Excellent. Thank you. Okay, so Councilmember Carr, in your motion, if you could incorporate these two condition precedents to a final issuance of the permit, I think we'll be in good shape if you support the project.
I move to close the public hearing and move the item with the two conditions that we stated.
Moved and seconded. Good. No more public testimony. Any other questions from members of the council? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. The motion passes as conditioned. Thank you very much. That's the way it ought to work. Excellent. Thank you to the community. Thank you to the developer. Thank you to the councilmember. Thank you to the city staff. Excellent job. Okay. Let us move on to items seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, which we're going to take as one item. There may require some separate votes, but we're going to take them all as one item, including the public testimony with one, as one item, okay? Thank you very much.
Mayor Steinberg and councilmembers, Brad Watson, Revenue Manager with the Finance Department. Since October of 2015, staff has been working hard to implement medical marijuana business regulations to be consistent with the state's Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act. Staff was directed to develop land use requirements and operating regulations. On March seventh, the council adopted marijuana cultivation regulations. On November fifteenth of 2016, the Law and Legislative Committee directed staff to come to council with proposed regulations for marijuana manufacturing and testing facilities. These regulations are before you tonight, along with proposed fees for their operating permits. The structure and requirements for these ordinances regulating marijuana businesses are all very similar. Title seventeen amendments for marijuana testing facilities are in item eighteen. The state of California and the city of Sacramento both wish to ensure that the marijuana and products containing marijuana sold in the city's dispensaries are safe to ingest. The state will require that marijuana that is commercially cultivated in the state be tested prior to allowing it to be distributed. Testing sites will be needed in the city to test samples of marijuana grown in the region. Staff finds that with certain special-use regulations, it would be appropriate to permit testing facilities of marijuana and marijuana-infused products in the general commercial, heavy commercial, industrial, manufacturing industrial park, and manufacturing, research, development zones where other laboratories are permitted. The special-use regulations are: Testing must be within a fully enclosed building and not visible from the public right-of-way. The testing site cannot be located within six hundred feet of a school, as defined by California Health and Safety Code. The testing site cannot have more than one sign, non-illuminated, maximum of six square feet in area. The testing must comply with all applicable state and local laws, and the facility cannot exceed six thousand four hundred square feet in the C-two zone. If the site is within six hundred feet of a neighborhood or community park, the conditional use permit would be heard by the Planning and Design Commission. If the site is not within six hundred feet of a neighborhood community park or community park, the conditional use permit would be heard by the zoning administrator. This regulation is the same as the hearing levels for the marijuana cultivation. As for item seventeen, non-volatile marijuana manufacturing and extraction, the same last land use requirements as for the testing labs are also proposed with a few additional requirements. The additional special-use regulations are: Non-volatile manufacturing only. The property owner must provide a neighborhood responsibility plan to address the adverse impacts of the non-volatile marijuana manufacturing on the surrounding area. Item seventeen also includes a resolution regarding the implementation of the neighborhood responsibility plan requirement relating to marijuana manufacturing. The resolution is similar to the one the council adopted for marijuana cultivation. For item twenty, the operating regulations for non-volatile marijuana manufacturing and testing laboratories are, again, similar to the cultivation requirements. They include background checks on interested parties, odor control plan, cash handling procedures, transportation plan, insurance requirements, state and county health permits, a non-volatile extraction plan for manufacturing, and the neighborhood responsibility plan for manufacturing. The operating permit applications require a fee to be established by resolution. Item nineteen brings this resolution to you for the council's approval. When calculating the operating permit fees for manufacturing and testing, staff took a look at all the program costs for various marijuana businesses and split it out by marijuana business type. This report has the same calculations for the entire program that was presented to council on March seventh for the cultivation permit process, permit fees. The specific fees are listed in the resolution on page eighteen of the staff report. Marijuana manufacturing permit program, thirty thousand nine hundred dollars. The renewal fee, twenty-six thousand six hundred and eighty. Marijuana testing laboratory permit program fee, fifteen thousand eight hundred and seventy, and renewal, thirteen thousand five hundred and seventy. There is some language I need to read into the record to clarify non-volatile extraction for marijuana manufacturing. Item seventeen, page six. In section two of the proposed ordinance amending Title seventeen relating to non-volatile marijuana manufacturing, the first sentence of the definition of marijuana manufacturing non-volatile that is added to section seventeen point one oh eight, point one four oh of the city code should read as follows. Marijuana manufacturing non-volatile means the production, preparation, propagation, and compounding of marijuana and marijuana products without the use of a volatile solvent to extract a resin or other substance from any part of a marijuana plant. Item twenty on page seven. In section two of the proposed ordinance amending Title five relating to marijuana manufacturing, the title of section five point one five oh, point nine five oh that is added to the city code should read, "Non-volatile Extraction Only." In addition, the text of that same section should read as follows. No manufacturing business shall use a volatile solvent to extract the resin or other substance from any part of a marijuana plant. And I do have the text of this to give to the clerk and the attorney. I'm recommending that the council close the public hearings and adopt the marijuana program ordinances and resolutions. I believe each item needs to be voted on separately. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer questions along with Joey Patterson from the Community Development Department and other staff from the city's internal marijuana program team.
Thank you very much. We have six public comment participants who would like to speak. Five have names and one does not. So we're going to call out the five that we have and the one that we don't. I think you'll know who you are.
Okay, so I'll read these names all at once then, so everyone can be prepared. We'll start with Malachi, I believe it's Amen, and then Betty Williams, Cassandra Jennings, Nate Bradley, and then the one that doesn't have a name is seventeen slash eighteen is the numbers that were selected, and then Jeff Hatley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Malachi Amen. I'm president of the California Urban Partnership. I'm also a resident in District Five. I'm here as a citizen and as a leader of the Urban Partnership, which has this mission to build economic security in communities of color at the local level. We do this by promoting collaboration amongst our partners with the goal of strengthening community programs, businesses, and public policy. Represented with us here today includes the Greater Sacramento Urban League, the NAACP Sacramento, the Sacramento Black Chamber of Commerce, Roberts Family Development Center, and then there are eighteen other local organizations who have joined us in our reason for being here today. And just wanted to point out, you know, before we appeal to your conscience and to your heart for everything, and everything, and we're appealing to everything inside of you that moves you to do what's right. On this day in 1968, Martin Luther King Junior was killed. On this day in 1968, Martin Luther King Jr. was killed. He fought for social justice, for economic justice, for a better quality of life for the descendants of slaves who came here, not on the Nina Pentor or the Santa Maria. And we're here today concerned about the fast-growing marijuana industry in the city of Sacramento, and we're urging you to enact policies that ensure that communities of color and low-income families in our city benefit from this economic growth. We're also concerned that full legalization of marijuana will further harm the health of our young people and our families. Over many decades, the criminalization of marijuana took a devastating toll, particularly on African-American and Latino families. Marijuana arrests sent thousands of men and women to prison, separated families, and dramatically increased poverty. The suffering from this destruction continues in the form of reduced access to affordable housing, vacant and/or blighted commercial and residential properties, struggling entrepreneurs of color, and lifelong joblessness for those who are incarcerated.
Malakai? I'm going to give you about 10 more seconds after I've given you 35 more already.
Okay, all right. So I should have been paying attention to that time clock, but...
I got your back.
Okay, thank you.
10 more seconds.
So we're here today to ask the city to slow this process down just for 30 days so that we can work with city staff to develop some recommendations, and those can come back for your consideration. I appeal to you for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Betty?
Good evening again.
Good evening.
Mayor and City Council. Again, Betty Williams with the Sacramento NAACP. The Sacramento NAACP has been reviewing the marijuana stakeholders meeting and recently invited the Sacramento City Hall Representative, Randy Knotts, to participate and educate our membership base and communities on the policies and the rules. During that time, the marijuana cultivation conditional use permit and site plan and design review was explained to our community. It was also explained that the next steps would be manufacturing and testing that our city council would address and approve. It was during that meeting that our community addressed Randy Knotts and asked why, and asked why the city didn't do more engagement in the African-American community. And it appears to be too late to participate or organize. And they requested for her not to make the statement look on the website. Filling dish and franchise, the membership asked Sacramento NAACP, what can we do to ensure equality? In order to ensure equality during this process and everyone that has the ability to participate in the marijuana economic industry within the city of Sacramento, the Greater Sacramento NAACP branch is requesting the city of Sacramento to put a place, to place aside up to a 40% or a agreed-upon number for minority-owned businesses. And to slow down the process for 30 days to evaluate how this could be done before moving forward. A formal letter from the Sacramento NAACP has been formulated with this request to the mayor and to the city council. And it's our hope that we can meet on this issue and come to a conclusion. I thank you for this time, and I hope that you do consider our request.
You can stay for a second. I have Councilmember Sheenair would like to ask a quick question.
The timing on when Ms. Knott came to speak with you?
We always meet on the second Saturday of the month, so whatever date the second Saturday was, that's when she came.
Of last month?
Yeah.
Oh, three weeks ago?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good evening. Vice Mayor Jennings and members of the council. My name is Cassandra Jennings with the Greater Sacramento Urban League. And I know some would ask, why is she here speaking on this issue? Well, the Greater Sacramento Urban League is all about representing the underserved communities and minority communities in particular as it relates to economic development and self-sufficiency. I know that the marijuana industry is fast-paced and fast-moving and growing. I realize the importance of this industry to the city and its residents and want to make sure that nobody is missed from benefiting from the economic growth. I would like to say that the criminalization of this marijuana has taken its toll, particularly on the communities that I see every day. I would like to ask the council to commit to really working with the interested parties and to really looking at to the mitigating impact of these, that it has on these communities. It may involve an impact fund. It could involve set-asides. But the reality is, is that certain communities are, have suffered from this industry, and now that it's time that it's booming, we need to really understand and deal with the disparities. I would also like to acknowledge the importance because as we talk about it, it involves economic development, involves education. It's about jobs, and it's about livable communities. And I'd like to really emphasize the impact that this will have on youth and the importance of education because there's a huge impact and effect on adolescents' brain development as it relates to marijuana. So we need to look for set-asides that we can really address the education of our youth as well. So I really ask your council to commit to looking at the disparities and the equity that we've been talking about all evening, also in this issue of marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Nate?
You have some.
Notice, well, can I? I noticed, you know, that the presiding officer did not cut off the speaker when she went beyond two minutes.
Do I expect, do I get the exact same?
It was two minutes and four seconds. I'm teasing, just having a good time here. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. My name's Nate Bradley. I'm with the California Cannabis Industry Association. First, I wanted to thank the city of Sacramento for handling this issue. We've worked up and down the state on this issue, and Sacramento has really led the charge and has helped to, to set the bar on how this issue should be handled. Seven years ago, they took on the issue of medical marijuana dispensaries when nobody else would, and now you're leading the way on cultivation and manufacturing issue. And as somebody who's been working on this, I come from law enforcement. This has been a big issue. And so I appreciate you setting a model for how the rest of the state can actually act. With that said, we have been working with the city the past few months on these issues. When the ordinance did come out, there were a couple issues, or actually a few issues that did, that we did fine. I believe we sent a letter out to the council members yesterday, which outlined a lot of those, so I'm not going to waste your time and my limited time going over them right now. But I did want to say that we do look forward to working with you as we move forward over the next year, going through these hoops and hurdles that we are going to face. And I just wanted to once again say the industry is looking forward to working with you. Wanted to thank you for all the work you've done, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Robinson.
Okay, Jeff Hatley. And then Kimberly. I can't read this. I think it's Chilat. Thank you. And then the one that has no name for item 17/18.
Can the person with no name please come forward?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, council, for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Jeff Hatley from Sequoia Analytical Laboratories. We have a laboratory here in Sacramento, and I want to thank Brad and Joy and their staff for working so hard on getting these amendments made and getting these things through. We really encourage working with you guys. We encourage VIP tours. I know that Jeff Harris, Councilman Jeff Harris, has spent time in the laboratory, and we want to be able to show the community that we're actually doing a legit business. We're doing it safely. And we want to make sure that, you know, we do things right here. So please, we want to open the doors for VIP tours. Come by, see us, and we would love to show off. Thank you very much.
Okay, Kimberly?
Okay.
Hello. My name's Kimberly Chilcutt. I am the creator of Hummingbird Lane All Natural. I am a cannabis, not marijuana, company. Tonight, I've heard a lot about fines, not fines, but permits that are $30,000, renewals that are $26,000. Who's going to get a portion of what pie? What I have not heard is relief and increased quality of life to patients. That is the most important thing. And along with the permits, along with the regulations, you need to consider this medication needs to be available to people. I help veterans. I have several veterans that are here today because cannabis got them off of pharmaceuticals. We are losing an alarming amount of veterans. There are tons of people. Demographic is huge. And in our industry, diversity is not even a question. We are diverse. We support everybody. We support one another. We want to abide by your rules and your guidelines, but you need to understand us and what we do. And I know right now, a lot of people are looking at like, oh, we're the cash cow. No, we're not. It costs a lot of money to do what we do.
Can I, I don't want to interrupt, but I would like, it would be helpful to the council, I think, to understand whether you have a particular concern about these sets of ordinances.
I do. I do have a very big concern. The permits, 30 grand?
Oh, that it's too much to get started, I see. Okay.
Okay, let me ask you. Is there any other manufacturing entities within the city of Sacramento that is charged $30,000 for a manufacturing permit and $26,000 a year to re-up it? Is there one? Or are we targeted because you guys see dollar signs? Like I said, we are not making a ton of money. Those producers that are passionate and pure of heart for cannabis help people. I give more medication away to cancer patients, autism, Alzheimer's, Parkinson's, than I make money. And so do 99.9% of my peers. We cannot afford $30,000. When you do that to us, you are taking medication out of patients' hands. You are robbing them of relief and increased quality of life.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate this show of support for the speaker's point of view, but we're conducting a public hearing here and want to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard.
Our last speaker?
Are there any other witnesses? Yes. Yes. Who's that? Tracy.
Good evening.
Hi, Mayor Steinberg and members of City Council. I'm Tracy Schall with the Executive Director with Power and Alliance in District 6 and home to more than 29,000 jobs, predominantly in the manufacturing and construction sectors. I'm here tonight to support the city's movement into manufacturing and testing for the cannabis-related industry. As I've mentioned at previous council meetings, manufacturing jobs are critical to our economy, and they are critical to the success of our city. These jobs have the highest economic impact of any of the sectors, and it is important that we figure out how to keep those jobs within the city of Sacramento. With cultivation applications opening yesterday, I would like to note that 34 of the 70 applications for proposed cultivators are in our district. With less than 4% vacancy, our district is already thriving. And I just ask that city staff, as well as members of council, keep in mind that it's critical that we have available space and vacant buildings to these manufacturers and these R&amp;D facilities. These are the high-paying wages. They are a higher economic impact. And so I just would like to note that I think it's important that we come up with a balance in terms of bringing this industry and its various sectors online. And it's critical that we figure out a way to effectively and prudently integrate all types of this industry into our communities, not just one type. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much for coming and your testimony. Okay, we do have some council member comments and questions, and I know I have a few at the end here. Councilmember Sheenair? Well, yeah, let me, first of all, with regard to Ms. Chilcutt's testimony, which was very passionate. I know there are a lot of people here in support. I suppose the analytical question is whether or not the proposed fee structure will reduce the amount of necessary supply in the city so that people, especially people who suffer from debilitating illnesses, who need marijuana for medicinal purposes, will have a hard time accessing it. Do you have any opinion on the relationship between the fee structure and the ability to access the product, especially for medicinal purposes?
Actually, we didn't include that in the analysis of the fees. We...
Excuse me, excuse me. We show respect, please, in the chamber. Let's let the gentleman speak.
We focused on the cost of processing the permits and enforcement of the whole program citywide. And the lion's share of the fees go to enforcement for illegal manufacturers, illegal cultivators, illegal marijuana businesses.
Ms. Schall testified a moment ago that under the proposed fees, which are also significant for cultivation, we have 70 cultivators who, proposed cultivators, who have already applied, correct?
They applied for the conditional use permit. That's a separate fee. They have not...
Cultivation, but they're interested in entering the business?
Correct.
Okay.
They will, they will apply.
Those fees?
Well, those were the conditional use permit fees. They're around $20,000 apiece. The operating fees are from, I'd have to look, it's in here, but somewhere around the $10,000 to $30,000.
Okay, so to enter the cultivation business, tonight we're talking about manufacturing and testing. To enter the cultivation business, to apply, it's a combined fee of, I'm just taking the numbers that you just gave, 30 to $40,000, correct?
Correct.
And you have 70 businesses that have applied to enter the cultivation business. That doesn't sound to me like there's a problem with the number of suppliers or takers, at least when it comes to cultivation. Would it be any different for manufacturing and testing? I don't know. I guess we'd have to see the number of applicants that we get.
We're expecting fewer manufacturers, but there's been a great deal of interest at this level of coming to Sacramento.
Okay. So let me get to the second point, then I'll turn it over.
Can we be clear on the fees, just so people understand?
Yes, go ahead, Jay.
So if I can, and Brad, correct me if I'm wrong. We're talking about two different sets of fees here. One set of fees are the permit fees, which is under Title 5. And Brad's talked about those. Those funds go directly towards, or primarily towards enforcement. 12 officers, three sergeants, six code officers, I believe, the time for the attorney, and then processing the applications. We know that there may be 1,500 illegal grows in the city if you look at electricity usage. That's what we need to make sure. And that's, and I would assume my colleagues have many of the same complaints. We get the most complaints about illegal grows in our neighborhoods that causes crime. That's what we want to get rid of. So those funds, and by Prop 218, we can't charge more. We don't charge more than it actually costs us to provide those services. So that's, that's that set of fees. The second set of fees, this council requires in everything we're doing, including tonight, a conditional use permit to make sure that the business is acceptable to the community, and the community has input on that. That's the second set of fees, is to go through that CUP process. So just to be, to clarify where those fees are.
So Ms. Chilcutt, again, is apparently less concerned about what the money's going to be used for than the fact that it is a high price, let's admit it, to enter the business now under a legalization regime than it was. business now under a legalization regime than it was previously. So hold on. And so we know in the cultivation arena that the $40,000 or so fee has still attracted 70 or so...
Two days.
Excuse me?
In two days.
Cultivators in two days. And then on the manufacturing and testing side, I guess we're about to find out, but you've said you've worked with, quote, "the industry," and there's a significant amount of interest, even with the fee structure that you've laid out, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Let me move to the second point, and that is the testimony of Ms. Williams, Ms. Jennings, and Mr. Amen, who come forward, I think, with some very compelling concerns, in my view. And certainly, you spoke eloquently, Malachi, about, and the others, about how the criminalization of this drug has resulted in discrimination and disparate treatment and the breakup of families. And now you have concern about how the legalization is implemented in a way that doesn't cause, even in an unintended way, the same effect and impact. And I think that is very legitimate. I know with cultivation, that Councilmember Gera and others, Chenier, worked on a mitigation fee arrangement here, but you're asking a much broader question, which is how are we going to make sure, if we go forward in this business, and I know I'm personally willing but wary, how are we going to make sure that the benefits, especially on the revenue side, help the communities that need the help the most and the causes that you work on every day? And I guess there are a couple of things. Number one, I'm very worried, as a new mayor, about the city budget. I mean, we've come in here with a major, with a big agenda here, around youth especially. And I look at those five-year budget projections, again, I always turn to Laney in the front row, and the darn $29 million that you've brought to us from PERS, you know, that our unfunded liability on the PERS issues in five years. And frankly, I look at this marijuana issue as a potential saving grace here. No, I'm sorry, you're darn right, it's about, you're darn right, it's in part about money. Because otherwise, we might choose to not go in, excuse me, we might choose to not go into this business all the way. But it is about revenue. And so without that revenue, I know we're going to have a hard time following through on a lot of the internship and youth department and youth initiatives, as one example that we want to do. In addition, all the public safety needs we have in the city, so that's one thing. Secondly, though, I think you raise, and Betty Williams raised, a very important point about who has the opportunity to go into the business, right? And are we going to commit, just like with the gender and racial/ethnic equity issue we discussed earlier, are we going to have a goal and a timetable to commit to a certain percentage for minority communities from disadvantaged neighborhoods? And our answer must be yes. But I would submit to you that if we pass this tonight and we commit to you, that we will agendize those very issues in collaboration with you to make sure that we, that the benefits of this policy, which, again, I'm a little bit wary of, accrue to the benefits of the communities you represent. That's why we're here. So I think what I'd like to do, again, subject to the council, I'd like to go forward tonight, but with that commitment, you're darn right, we're going to work with you. You're darn right, we're going to agendize these subjects that you raised here so that we can perfect this policy and make sure that the benefits go in the areas that you have addressed. That would be my commitment to you. All right, Councilmember Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, excuse me. People are not allowed to speak up and shout out during the course of the council meeting. It's not fair to everybody else. Excuse me. One more time, and I'm going to ask that you be removed. Thank you. If you want to sign up for public testimony, you're welcome to sign up for public testimony. We'd gladly hear your testimony. Councilmember Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. So we've been working on these issues a long time. I think I've been at this now about two and a half years, and it's complicated. I want to thank Brad and Joy and Laney and all of the staff who've been working on it. We are, we are moving through a number of issues, and we still have a number left to go after this. We've had multiple public hearings, both at Law &amp; Ledge and at City Council and through stakeholder meetings that the department has put together. That said, I think that the letter received, and Malachi, you and Cassandra and Betty raised good points, and I am totally agreeing with the mayor. I met with, with you all and some of the representatives of the group that signed the letter yesterday, and I made a personal commitment to work with you. You know, in the letter, it does mention Oakland. I think we're actually ahead of Oakland in some ways and different than Oakland and others, so I just want to point that out because I think it's important. Oakland has some very severe caps on what they do, and so when we talk about, and if I can use these words in this context, when we talk about access and opportunity, there's much more in Sacramento, the way we've set this up, than there is in Oakland. Oakland has put aside a certain percentage of their permits, which I understand. We don't have cap, so there, I don't know how you put aside, I think there's other ways that we need to look at this to ensure equity. And I think that's something that we should do in moving forward. I totally believe that we need to do more for our youth and the potential impact that this will have on our young people. It's where I've been the last six years, as you all know. Those are pieces, there are lots of pieces here that are on the expenditure side of the revenues. In the letter that you sent, and I just want to be clear on this, on the letter you sent, here's four areas where we think these monies should be spent. I've learned over the last couple of years from our city attorney, we can't designate those funds in the ordinance as we collect money, because then it would have had to have been a two-thirds vote, which is why we did Measure Y last year. Where the appropriate piece is, is through the budget process, and we sent a, I don't know if Mr. Ketti shared with you, I did send all of our budget hearings and the schedule of what we're doing over the next three or four months. I think that's one appropriate place to have the discussions about where revenue will come in and how we want to spend that revenue over the next couple of years. We're not going to start seeing dollars out of this, I would say, six months to nine months. The permit fees, there's nothing that accrues to the city as far as excess revenue to be used for other things. Those fees are spoken for. Where the city will do well is out of the business operations tax, and it's going to take organizations or businesses to get up and running before we start accruing those funds. But I think that through this budget process, we can start to designate where dollars go, not directly from cannabis, but where dollars in the general fund, and it just so happens that hopefully the general fund will get increased revenue because of this. So I'm personally committed to doing this. I think it's, it's a different situation than Oakland, but I think we need to look at where the applications are coming from, who is applying. I asked Brad, he said 70 to 80 applications. Yesterday morning was the first that they could be turned in. I assume we're going to have a lot more for cultivation. The other piece, and the mayor mentioned this, is we do have the choice for all of the folks in the industry here to do 1% Neighborhood Responsibility Plan. This came from Mr. Gera, or to look at an impact fee. Manufacturing has that as well. The testing piece, we expect at the most to have five to 10 labs. If we have five labs in the city, I think it would be a lot. So that's not a big piece, although it is big on jobs, the labs. So people know probably produce 50 jobs, and they're skilled jobs. So if we have five labs, that's 250 new jobs, and thank you for the information on that today. So with that, what I would like to do is actually, I know we're going to have to do this one at a time, but move the staff recommendations, and we can get back to that. So I'll ask the city clerk, but with direction on two things. One is on the pieces that came from the industry, and Nate, thank you for coming up and speaking. I think the language that Brad read in on the volatile took care of some of your concerns, but there are other things that we can do. So I'd like to direct staff to work with Mr. Bradley and the folks that he represents to make sure we get the technical pieces of this right. We know, and we've said this many times, this is a process. It's like a Waldorf school. This is a journey that we're going on, and that we will be coming back to tweak all of these things as we see how they're working. Because we are, and I appreciate what Mr. Bradley said, we are leading the state here. So number one, to do that. And number two, to work with the folks who sent the letter and other interested parties around the issue of equity, to ensure that those who have participated, I'm going to try to say this correctly, those who have participated in this industry in the past, while it may not have been legal, but have also taken the brunt of criminalization, that those groups are not excluded from the profit that we all see coming out of this.
That's great, but I want to do more than just ask the city manager to look to...
I'm not done.
Oh, you're not done? Go ahead. Okay.
So what I would like, and I'm also personally committed, as I made the commitment yesterday, and I'll fulfill that, to work with you all on that, to come back to the council with a number of things. One, time and place for each of these recommendations, to develop a set of recommendations for the council, and I think you have a pretty good idea of where we are, and to come back with a calendar on where and when those recommendations should come forward. So some of them will be through the budget process, some of that, some of them may be as we come back and tweak some of these ordinances as we learn moving forward. So again, this is, this is a complicated issue. It's not a matter of saying, we're just going to do this set aside or do the loan program that Oakland does. We have to figure out what works for Sacramento and adapt that with a very specific goal in mind, as I think Malachi has particularly put it. So that's, that's the motion that I'm making. Does that cover that?
Yes, fully. Thank you. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that staff has worked very hard on this, on this issue, and members Gera and Chenier have worked very hard on this issue. And this is a huge issue. It's not a big issue. This is extraordinary. You know, this is probably the biggest opportunity for new revenues generated by this city that we're going to see as council people. In addition to that, I think it's probably the biggest opportunity we have to turn around our inner cities, cities, inner cities that have been neglected, that we're going to see in probably, as we all sit here on the council, but even much further than that. And, you know, in it, in as much as folks have worked very hard on this issue, I think it, you know, it still is, comes up short in terms of really recognizing the important, the importance of the opportunity. And I think it's, you know, it's difficult for me to just hear, you know, these communities to be asked to wait, you know, wait and wait and wait. I think these are issues that should be in the forefront and should be dealt with in the early stages of, of trying to implement, you know, a policy that we still don't know all of the impacts. We know the impacts that they've had for generations. We know how they, how things like this have decimated communities, particularly communities of color. And when we have a golden opportunity to now help correct some of those issues, you know, it appears that, you know, these communities are being asked to wait. And, you know, I, for one, cannot support this ordinance or any of these ordinances the way that they're drafted right now. And there are, there are a couple of issues that could be changed, and I would be able to support it. But one, you know, I had stated my opposition to allowing non-retail uses in retail zones. And I think, you know, this council decided to allow cultivation in retail districts. It's not a cultivation, it's not a retail use. I opposed it, and that would be one of the reasons for my opposition to these ordinances. I believe that our retail corridor should be utilized by retail businesses, people that can come in and out of these businesses and operate in a retail fashion. And particularly until we know what the impacts are going to be. We still don't know what all the impacts are going to be. And this is, in spite of it being legal now in the state, this still is a very sensitive issue. You know, this is something that, you know, I don't know that we have quantified yet. I do think that, as some had stated about having opportunities for people that have been traditionally left out of opportunities to be included in the process, and I think it was suggested that because we have no cap, we don't know how to come up with the appropriate measure, you know. I think that, in my opinion, this, it will be modified from time to time, and I think we can start at a place and we can modify that issue if we were to put a percentage on, on permits that are issued and we set aside for, for communities or people that have been disproportionately left out. We just heard this large, or this, this issue relative to equity and diversity and all these other things as it relates to jobs and, and gender. And yet, it's even been more devastating when you now bring in this whole element of legalized marijuana. And so I believe, in my opinion, this is a huge missed opportunity. And, you know, I'm hopeful, as we go through this process, that, you know, we will all be here and be able to adjust it to a place that it's more equitable. But, but as it exists right now, I don't think we're doing it, and I think it's a bit insensitive, the way that it's been brought forward, particularly not knowing the impacts. We have a stated 1% fee that people can pay or a voluntary community benefits agreement. To me, that's ridiculous, you know, when it's voluntary. And if we're going to, I mean, you, we cannot push unidentified burdens on these urban communities and think that they're not going to break at some point. I think we have to have more focus, more resources put into these communities. And I think, as the mayor stated, that, you know, this, I mean, this is a, you know, our city government is a big business. This is a business, it's a business decision, and I think we have to look at it as such. It's also a human decision. You know, I think that, you know, our, you know, as the mayor stated, our unfunded liabilities is one area that could benefit from the revenues generated. In addition to that, we have a huge homeless issue. We've been talking about it. I think some of the funds that are generated from this could be dedicated to the homeless. And, but I have to say that the part of it that is probably the most distasteful to me is, is the fact that we have a voluntary community benefits agreement for something that we know is, it has already left a trail of impacts in a lot of our communities through, throughout Sacramento. And now that there's an opportunity to really do something about it, we choose not to at this point. So with that, all in my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And I will not be in support. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Gera.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm going to just state the facts, not the alternative facts here. And that is that it is not a voluntary agreement. To get your conditional use permit, you need to do a Neighborhood Responsibility Plan. That could be a number of options that we found out, the best and strongest legal case to ensure that we are prepared for the unintended consequences. And so let's step back here a little bit, because, you know, there's a lot of emotion over the issue of, of this new industry. And regardless how we feel, I think most of us have been vocal about where we were on Prop 64, and regardless if we disliked it or liked it, the California voters approved it. Some jurisdictions, some communities, some leaders have, have decided to put their head in the sand and think that not doing anything will be okay. I do have to say that this council took a position, and has taken a position over the last year, to recognize the challenges that this industry has posed on our community. And we've seen it. We've seen it, what's happened to communities when we... seen it, what's happened to communities when we don't regulate it. And what we've done with cultivation, and what we're doing now with, with manufacturing and testing, is ensuring that we have the highest standards on an industry and putting it out of the community. Because what's happened in the community is we've seen the issues of crime, we've seen the issues of home invasions, we've seen the issues of fires with manufacturing happening through illegal methods. And what, what, what these, these actions that we're proposing today is to say, those types of, those types of, of jobs, those types of industries and commercial activities belong in the appropriate land use locations. That's what we're doing here today. They're saying that, that manufacturing needs to reside in areas of manufacturing, that the types of impacts should be mitigated, and the appropriate fee be charged to cover the cost of the program. We are following the California Constitution on all fronts here, both on Prop 64, on Prop 218. And let's not kid ourselves about the need for our code enforcement and law enforcement. Because without the fees, we will continue with the status quo and the problems that happen, and communities that are victimized by it. And those are Latino and African community, and, and the API communities in the South area as well. We see it, we hear it all the time. Again, the benefits here, we will have a code enforcement team, a law officer, a law enforcement team, that will ensure that the industry is operating at the highest standard. Second, we don't know what the future entails. If I did, I'd probably be, you know, doing something different. But since we don't know what the future entails, what this council has done is agreed to plan for that. And that neighborhood responsibility plan plans for that. We've done that over the last year or so of community outreach, to ensure that we get a mechanism that we can plan in the future. The permit fees come upfront to address the immediate impacts. The neighborhood, neighborhood responsibility plan comes at the, after the first year and years after, to recognize what the potential impacts are after the operation goes. And this, the issue of community outreach is critical. Okay? That, that is, I think, how do we ensure that everyone gets access to this? I know I've committed to my community and spoken with our community and the Avondale Glen Elder Neighborhood Association, to have our city staff walk through the process and understand how to take advantage of the industry. And they've even created their own group, you know, their own subcommittee within their own neighborhood in the Avondale Glen Elder community, that, to, to become experts at this issue and be consistently active. And that's what we need to continue. So I want to thank them particularly for being engaged at that level. I want to encourage everyone on this council today to vote for this, these, these, all of the, the staff proposals today. Because they will regulate a problem that is being unregulated right now. And they will help us move forward. And yes, there may, or may not be benefits financially. I disagree with the notion that our city should run like a business. We're not a business. We're in, in the, in the, we're in a responsibility to service the public need. And we are taking actions to address those pub, public needs, given our true realities. And with that, I'll ask for our council members to support this and ask for your support.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Warren, counterpoint?
Clarifications to, to staff. Maybe I misunderstood then when Councilman Gera had said that the community benefits agreement is not voluntary, is mandatory. So I just want to get a, I want to be clear.
Clarify, please.
Yes, they are required to submit a community benefits agreement. One of the options is they could commit to 1% of their gross receipts.
So, so, but let me, let me be clear. So if they submit, if they say they're gonna pay the 1%, then they don't have to do the community benefits agreement?
That is their agreement.
No, no, that, that's not my question. Do the, does every successful applicant have to have a community benefits agreement that is made with the community, or can they opt in or out by paying 1%?
Okay. So we're calling it a community responsibility plan. No, excuse me, sorry.
Let's just, if they pay 1%, do they have to worry about the community at all? Do they have to do anything with the community? Yes or no? Yes or no? If they say, I'm gonna pay 1%?
They also need a community relations plan.
So, so they need a community relations plan and pay the 1%?
Right. The one, the 1% is the neighborhood responsibility.
No, that's not what I'm asking.
Hold on. Let, let, let's see if we can get, Mr. Sanchez, maybe you can help us here, please. Can you explain this clearly? What is it? What are the alternatives? Does the one, I think Mr. Warren, comes from what Warren's asking, and does the 1%, if that's paid, does that go to the neighborhood? I thought that was the essence of what was negotiated by Councilmember Geta and others during the cultivation process. So please, clearly.
Mayor, I'm going to ask our point person in our office, Stevie DeGaki, to lay out an overview of those requirements.
Sure. The neighborhood response, well, let me back up. The neighborhood responsibility agreements that are supposed to satisfy the requirement for a neighborhood responsibility plan, those funds submitted through those agreements will be put into a fund that will be paid, that will pay for mitigation measures that are identified in the fee study.
So, so, so listen, that, this is, so, so there is, so it is predetermined what the benefit, what the neighborhood's benefit plan is. If somebody pays 1%, that satisfies their neighborhood benefit agreement. Is that, is that yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. So that's what I'm talking about in terms of, if they pay the 1%, they have no other responsibility.
No. That's not what's being said here. And maybe I can clarify, not having, excuse me, not having been on the council, I think I understand it. It's 1% or an agreed upon neighborhood mitigation plan. If you pay the 1%, the money goes to the neighborhood, correct?
Right. It goes to the, goes into the district to pay for mitigation measures from that development.
It goes into the district. That's the part that I think keeps getting lost here. The 1% goes into the district.
A neighborhood, what my understanding is then, is that this 1% goes into a pool, and the community benefits have already somehow been predetermined by whomever else is deciding where to spend that 1%. Is that correct?
I think it depends on what you're talking about with regard to community benefits.
Where does the 1% go? What is it used for?
1% goes to mitigation measures.
What is it used for? What, what are the mitigations then that it's used for?
That's what we need to determine through our fee study.
So we don't know what the 1% is, is being used for?
Correct. Not, not at this point.
Mr. Mayor, if I can...
All right, all right. So, listen.
Go ahead, Alan.
I got one more question.
Go ahead.
Okay. And, and that's what I mean by being half-baked or being rushed. The second part of this is, the, I thought I heard Mr. Gera say that these facilities will be, being put in the appropriate zone areas. And it sounded to me like previously they were going to be allowed in commercial zones as well. And so, you know, maybe, maybe I got it wrong. If it's, if they're not being allowed in commercial zones, then, then I'm wrong. But my understanding was that these would be allowed in, in C2, C4, you know, type zones in addition to some of the other zones.
The zones for manufacturing are C2, C4, and the other industrial zones. In the C2 zone currently, a manufacturing business is permitted at a maximum of 6,400 square feet. So the ordinance says manufacturing of marijuana products would be permitted maximum 6,400 square feet. The other zones are considered manufacturing zones, and there's no limit.
So essentially, okay, I got it. So are there any zones where it's not allowed?
No. Right now, we...
Allowed in every zone we have.
We, we have chosen the zones that currently allow manufacturing. We have not chose, for example, the limited commercial zone, the C1 zone, we are not allowing the manufacturing of marijuana products in that zone, or in the C4, 3 zone, or in the OB zone, or the RO zone. We're only proposing that manufacturing be permitted of marijuana products in zones that currently allow manufacturing.
So C2 zones currently allow manufacturing?
They allow up to 6,400 square feet of manufacturing, and that would be the limit of marijuana products that would be permitted.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jennings, and I may turn it over to Councilmember Geta for their explanation.
I guess my question is, you know, in listening to the community, I'm, I'm trying to understand, and whoever can answer this question can answer it, I'm trying to understand how have we involved the community, how have we involved the community in understanding ways to mitigate the impact of marijuana to the underserved communities and to people who are in those, those communities? How have we engaged them in that process?
We haven't done the study yet to figure out what the, what needs to be mitigated. Okay. But for the, for outreach, we went to neighborhood associations and invited them to our stakeholder meetings.
Okay. So we've involved neighborhood association. You got a better answer? I mean, because I'm, I mean, I'm not, I'm, I'm looking at, at more than just neighborhood associations that need to be involved in this process.
Could I add a little more to this? As part of the conditional use permit process, we route the application to all affected neighborhood groups and business groups, business association groups, which they have also the opportunity to comment on the application and to attend public hearings on the application. In addition, each application is required as part of recommended, strongly recommended as part of their conditional use permit application, and required as part of their business permit application, to have a community relations plan and a community relations contact. And it's that community relations plan that's more, if you look at the neighborhood responsibility plan as being something different, the community relations plan and the community relations contact is the person who, if there's problems, that the neighborhood, they're supposed to be meeting with the neighborhood and being their contact, and also coming up with different proposals to make it a better land use situation.
Right. And I, and I agree that should happen. I think my point is, before we go into those communities, what can be done upfront to mitigate the impact it's going to have on those communities, especially in the underserved communities that have been traditionally impacted by the use of marijuana? So I'm trying to get in front of the issue, and I think I could be supportive of the motion to move the items forward, as long as I know that we're working with the community, and they're coming back on an ongoing basis to be able to address those issues. And this council will hear those issues so that we can make sure that we're making the changes that need to be, and this is just not done, and it can never be done.
Let me see if I can help here. When you talk about a fee study, let's, let's go back to this, please. Is this a single fee study for the entire city, or is it a fee study for each application? The applicant's gonna have to pay money to mitigate. You said that the fee study is going to help determine how that mitigation money is going to be spent. Is that a project-by-project fee study that involves the community and the council members, or is that a single fee study for the entire city?
It's actually not a fee study. It's a study of the impacts. And then, what would it take?
Project-by-project or citywide?
Well, we have to do it for the whole city, but we'll, we'll have to focus on where the cultivation sites or the manufacturing sites are located. I mean, otherwise, you wouldn't know what the impacts are.
So once we get the applications, before we approve the applications, we do a study that shows the impact?
We can't do the study until they're, they're operating to know what the impacts are.
And so they pay the 1% upfront, that's essentially put into a, an escrow account?
Right.
The study gets done, there's then the pot of money to mitigate the impacts. And as that money is being put into escrow, my term, the next step, of course, is to work with all of the affected communities to determine the, the priorities for mitigation. Is that fair? Is that the way it works?
Yes. That's how I do it, isn't it?
Okay. Okay. So because of the Prop 218 nexus issues and the legal issues, the process is a little bit awkward. You wouldn't necessarily design it like this by choice if you didn't have the legal constraints. But the fact of the matter is, to sort of back up what Councilmember, to answer Councilmember Jennings's question, Vice Mayor's, is that in order to get a permit, you gotta pay money. You pay that money, that money's going to a fund specifically to mitigate neighborhood impacts. Study gets done, and then the council, conjunction with the community and the council member, prioritizes those impacts. In addition to the, our common obligation to take the revenue that we're gonna generate out of this whole enterprise, and to work with the community to make sure that we are funding the things that too often get left in the dust when it comes to budget priorities. That's, so I think that there's, all the work with the community and the neighborhood is ahead of us, because we don't yet know where the sites are gonna be located, but there's going to be a direct obligation to mitigate based on the sighting.
Yeah. And, and I, I totally agree that that's the case. I'm just saying that right now, we do know where those communities that have been impacted historically and traditionally for years, and we need to get in front of it as opposed to waiting to after the fact. We have, we have people right here in the audience who work and live in those communities, not just neighborhood associations, who want to be a part of the solution. And I just want a commitment that we are gonna continue to engage them in the process now before it, it becomes a reality, and before it becomes law.
I think we have to do both.
Yeah, exactly.
We're doing both. Yeah. Okay. Councilmember Ashby?
Thanks, Mayor.
Terry.
I probably don't need to enter the fray on this one too much. I've been very clear. This is not an issue that I agree with the bulk of the council on. I think we have proceeded down a wrong path in the city of Sacramento. And this issue, on this particular issue, on this item, I, from my opinion, very clearly have not gone far enough, nor have we talked to the right people, nor are we on the right path, pace, or timeframe. And there is just no way I would support it tonight. And I think even if it goes, which it sounds like there is will to go, there ought to be some really good staff work here on how we come back. Because we've known this from the very beginning, that some of these districts are going to be hit hard. And I just don't, I just don't think we have done enough on the front end of making these decisions. And just remember that, all that means is, you know, for us, our assurances are, before we give a vote to something, that we know that we can protect and serve our districts. And so if you have at least one council member pretty egregiously upset that he doesn't feel that the assurances are there, then we have fallen short of that mark. And so for me, that's enough reason to not support it. But I don't need to get involved in the, in the banter.
Okay. I'll tell you one last thing before we take it, but that would really help here, that I think is sort of the unanswered question. It is true, as Councilmember Chenier said, that we may not begin seeing the revenue from sales tax and from property tax and from, and from BOT, six months or a year, et cetera. I know that you haven't, any built into your budget projections, understandably, at this point, what kind of revenue we may be talking about. I think we may be able to, we ought to take advantage of some outside consulting assistance here to try to help us answer that question. Because it, in, in some ways, it may be unanswerable definitively. But we're going ahead with this, with the anticipation that there's gonna be a significant upside. And you're gonna be asking us, and the manager's gonna be asking us to make budget decisions over the next couple of months with long-term implications. And I think we need some guidance. I think we need some outside guidance from those that looked at other jurisdictions, even other states, you know, given our size, given the scope of what we are probably going to pass here tonight, and what we've passed already. What it is, we can anticipate here, within at least some sort of ranges over the next three to five to seven to 10 years. Because that's the big piece of this thing here. And if we don't know the answer, then I think we're gonna continue to have the festering concerns from council members, and from the community who wonder, right, what's the upside of... and from the community who wonder, right, what's the upside of all of this? Well, we've got to try to try the best we can, even imperfectly, to better answer that question. All right, is there a motion in a second? Yeah. We've got two more. And we have more speakers, too. Jade, did you want to make a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Harris wants to.
Jeff?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, there's a couple of pieces of this that do concern me as well, and that is the impacts on businesses that are not marijuana-focused in terms of lease rates of commercial space. And, you know, we all know that it's there, we all know that to lease warehouse buildings in the district where people are interested in cultivating cannabis, that rates are skyrocketing and more normal businesses, like trade businesses or auto body shops, painters, are actually being run out of town and going to Rancho Cordova or other places where they're not considering these types of ordinance. You know, frankly, since Prop 64 passed, we've been on a train that's a little hard to slow down because we wanted to keep local control. That was the impetus to even go down this road. We know that we had a black market industry that was in full swing, and as Councilmember Warren alluded to, that's brought a lot of impacts. And certainly in Councilmember Garrett's district, it's been extreme with the illegal grows in his, in his area. So that was really the impetus to move down this road. My concern is that we are not thinking about restraining the business a little more in terms of total numbers of CUPs that we might issue. I realize there are a tremendous number of unknowns, you know, when does market saturation happen? But we're already seeing a lot of money from out of town come into Sacramento. I mean, very big money because this city is kind of leading the charge to take that local control. And, you know, the motivation is really to do the right thing for the city, to gain a modicum of control, to be able to get tax money and use it for a good purpose for the people, youth initiatives, or to deal with homelessness. I mean, we can choose to do with that tax revenue what we feel is best for the city, and it can be very significant. When you take all those factors together, I think we're on the right path to try to regulate the marijuana industry, but I am myself a little concerned about the way it's moving in terms of the volume of the business and how it's affecting our lease rates in commercial space. That being said, I can support what's on the plate tonight, but moving forward, I think that I will certainly be talking to staff about ultimately, you know, putting some restraints on where we go until we understand more fully how this industry is going to affect the conditions locally. Like, it seems to me that with the number of people applying for permits to do cultivation, we will very quickly exceed, you know, in terms of production, the amount of marijuana that can be legally consumed in medical dispensaries, who only have 30 dispensaries. So where's that product going to go? There are a lot of unknowns. This is a tricky process, and as Jay has alluded to many times, we have to feel our way through this, and the actions that we take are not irreversible. If we go down the wrong path, we can adjust as we move forward. Thank you.
I do. I have multiple motions.
Go ahead.
I think we need to do this one at a time, so.
We have more to public testimony, so make the motions, people who came up.
So is that changing our council rules?
Yeah.
Because our council rules were, once we started an item, we didn't allow additional public testimony.
Yeah, well, that's true. I mean, I was responding to the person shouting out from the audience to sign up, but, and we welcome people to testify publicly, but pursuant to the rules, you have to sign up for an item before it begins, so make your motion.
All right, so I want to, so I have, I'll do the motions and I'll provide direction at the end, as we talked about before. So I want to, on item 17, close the public hearing and move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, let's call the roll on that item, please.
Okay, so for item number 17, we'll start with Member Ashby.
No.
Warren.
No.
Harris.
Aye.
Ensign is absent. Chenier.
Aye.
Kara.
Aye.
Jennings.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
And the mayor.
Aye.
Passes 6-2.
Okay.
Item 18, I want to close the public hearing and move the item, move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Without objection, can we substitute the previous roll call? Six to two minutes, the way we used, that's the way we used to do it in the legislature, just substitute the previous roll call. Six to two.
Okay.
All right.
Motion passes six to two.
Okay.
Item 19, I want to close the public hearing, move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded, without objection, we'll substitute the previous roll call. Motion passes six to two.
Item 20, I want to move the staff recommendation. I also want to provide direction to the city manager, actually, on three pieces. One is to take account of the letter that came from the industry from Mr. Bradley and work with Mr. Bradley and his cohort of folks to see what we can bring back to the council there. Also, to work with Mr. Amen and folks who signed the letter around the equity issues, come back with a calendar, with recommendations and a calendar of when those recommendations should be discussed by the council. I know the mayor and I have both personally committed to work with him. I'm sure Mr. Garrett will do the same, as he's been involved in this quite a bit. And three, which we did on cultivation, is to come back in six months to the council with an update on where we are, because I don't want to wait a year. And I think we had the same recommendation on cultivation. So those are my three pieces, direction, which would cover the industry.
Second, my Councilmember Geta, again, without objection, will substitute the roll, previous roll call, which was a six to two vote, same member, on the a and n sides. Fair enough? That measure passes. Very good. That ends that item. Thank you very much, everybody. Let's now move on to file item, but, 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 21.
Okay.
Okay.
This is a.
Mr. Colville.
Sir.
We insist that you come up to the podium.
This is a City Council Financing Authority joint item for authorization of remarketing.
Hold on, point of privilege here for everybody watching, members of the press, et cetera, we have an announcement to make before Mr. Colville makes his presentation. I'm pleased to announce that tonight in executive session, that the city council made a unanimous decision to appoint John Colville as our city treasurer. Yeah. Mr. Colville has served with distinction and with skill as the interim treasurer over the past year-plus, and I know it has been a lengthy process, sort of segmented by two different mayors and two different managers and some transition in between, and we appreciate what you've done for the city over the last year-plus, throughout your entire career, but your willingness to take on this role on a permanent basis. And so we wanted to make that announcement tonight and welcome you and say we're happy to take that interim tag off of your, off of your title. Of course, next week, we'll approve a contract and do all the, do all the formality, but I wanted to announce that tonight and say congratulations to you, John.
Thank you. Now I have to revise my report here. Thank you, sir. It's been, it's quite an honor and it's a pleasure to serve as your, serve as the city treasurer. It's been, like I said, over a year, and I feel, like I said earlier, I feel more confident accepting the job now than I did when you offered me the interimship, so I'm looking forward to everything going forward. Thank you again.
Terrific. Let's take up this item that, you know, we heard a couple of weeks ago. I think this should be a little bit more routine in terms of presentation and vote. Thank you.
Right. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the council. I'm John Colville, the city treasurer now. I'm here, as promised, to seek an authorization for the remarketing of the 97 lease revenue bonds. On March 27th, you approved the corresponding term sheet for this transaction, the future issuance of refunding bonds per the comprehensive project agreement. I'm prepared to revisit some of the information from the March 21st if necessary, or we can just move to the recommendation. And that's up to you folks.
Very good.
Would you like to?
And when you said presentation, you meant it. Okay. Thank you. Hey, that's it. We'll promote you again. Okay. Councilmember Ashby?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think we need a presentation. You did such a great job last time, but I was somewhat disappointed that this item was on a very full agenda, and I didn't think that it got its, its just deserves, particularly with the media. And so for a quick recap, I just want to note to people, this is part of the deal that gets lost in the translation sometimes. When the Kings were going to leave Sacramento in general, we were looking at over $60 million worth of bonds underlying the Natomas site that we weren't sure what we would do with or how we would pay it, the general fund being the stopgap. The fact that they stayed and then agreed to pay those bonds and continued to pay them was step number one in helping us not take on that huge debt encumbered by a previous council. The second step in that was you coming in and negotiating a phenomenal deal on behalf of the city of Sacramento, knocking that from 60 to where it is now at 50, and then making a commitment to buy it down another 20 million in the next couple of months to get what was $60 million in debt for the city down to $30 million in debt in the city that we are not paying, that they are paying, in less than two years, with a commitment from them beyond that to try to pay that down even farther, if not off, in the next two years. So that is phenomenal work on behalf of the city of Sacramento and a terrific example of why you are deserving of the new title that you have earned. And so I want to make the motion tonight to move this forward and thank you again for your work, not only on these bonds, but in saving the people of Sacramento an awful lot of money and putting us in a very good position to be able to deliver on a promise of a reuse in Natomas. Previously, we could not do that with the bonds underneath. And whatever comes in there has to be able to help pay back those bonds. So this is a big deal. I know it's a piece that's complicated, and so a lot of folks sort of glaze off on us when we start to talk about bonds, but you did a phenomenal work here, saved the city millions of dollars, put us in a very good position to move forward. Thank you, and I'd like to move the item.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, I'd like to second.
It's, go, I'm sorry.
Well, I might have missed my chance. It sounds like I got scooped, but that's okay. John, you know, this was pretty creative work on your part. I would say that you've lowered our exposure substantially, and collateral was really the issue, and you really jumped right into that and came up with very creative solutions. So the city's in a better place for your work. I appreciate it, and I'm happy to call you our city treasurer.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Treasurer, thank you. Okay, no public testimony, moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstained, the measure passes on a vote of one, two, three, four, five, six to nothing. Councilmember, six to nothing. Good enough. Okay, we have, are these items 22 and 25, do they need to be heard or are they just essentially passed for publication items?
No, item number 22 does need to be heard. Item 25 does not.
Okay.
But item 22 is very short.
Item 22, very short. See if you can make it shorter than the treasurer's presentation of the item.
Well, you've already approved this once on consent back in February, so I'm just asking that it be approved in open session. It's the, it's a per regulation, the fire department pays 12% of the employer side. We need to move it to the employee portion.
Got it.
Move the item?
Moved by both councilmembers Carr and Chenier and Harris.
I'm going to give that one to Mr. Carr.
Okay. No public testimony, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. We only have five of us here, so it's five to nothing.
Wow.
Very good. It's a five to nothing vote. Okay. File 25, we don't need to hear.
Are you voting?
Yes.
We'll add Councilmember, is that possible before you two, without objection, to reopen, add Councilmember Geta's vote, make that a six to nothing vote on that item.
Can you second?
I'll defend the lawsuit.
I bet so.
Okay. Very good. You know.
Moving on.
Used to be a lawyer. Okay. Here we go.
Past tense.
Okay. Let's go to public comment for items not on the agenda. Go, go.
Okay, so Fago is first, followed by Courtney Collins, Kim Church, Wanda, and following Wanda is David Andre.
So I understand that there's supposed to be this policy where people's property is not confiscated by police, and, not this Saturday, but the Saturday before that, while I was at a engagement, SacPD went and confiscated my property, which can be seen in these pictures right here. Thankfully, one of my friends was able to interact with them and acquire a receipt for me, because I wasn't even in the area. If I hadn't, if my friend hadn't have been able to get this receipt, everything that's in that box is everything I own. That's my blankets, my sleeping bags, my dog food, everything I own, confiscated. I wouldn't have even known that the police had it if somebody hadn't have been there to get me that receipt. So whatever your police chief was telling you about this policy of not taking people's stuff, yeah, they're still taking it. And so far as saying that, you know, it's too much to be here all night a couple of weeks ago, I find that pretty offensive, because we end up having to be here all night every week. We've been doing it for years. It's only been three months. And we're asking just to be heard, to be respected, you know? We're just asking that people's rights are respected. And it's really bothering when we get ultimatums like, stop talking about something that's going to affect people's lives, or I won't even consider a good idea. You know, that's not how it works. The public is upset for a good reason, and we're going to keep talking about issues that matter. You know, it's kind of, it's very infuriating when, when we get that kind of commentary. We're not getting paid to be here. We're sacrificing our lives, our personal time. People are having to pay extra money to get kids. We're getting tickets outside for parking tickets for whatever random reasons. We're making sacrifices to be here.
Thank you for your testimony. So.
Show some respect.
Courtney?
Two human beings died on city hall grounds. One of them was my father, but you all know that already. When I stood before you all on my previous trip, I was weary, as not one single shelter had been open after these deaths. I knew, however, that I had to speak up for my dad and the rest of the unhomed community, and when I stated that a few warming centers were not enough, that sentiment was echoed not once, but twice by a certain member of this council. When I met with this individual, his assistants, and the police chief, I desperately wanted to believe that there was real intent to implement immediate and effective solutions for the unhomed population. Through my friendships in the advocate community, I came to find that not only had there been no solutions established or even begun, but the unhomed community continues to be abused, criminalized, humiliated in the press, and ignored by those who have the resources to help them right now. The root issue of homelessness, being illegal, allows for all of this, and it is foul. Regardless of the law, every human being has the right to shelter, water, and a place to use the bathroom. The advocacy community also deserves the right to speak on these issues in whatever way they see fit, without threats and ultimatums from the mayor and council, especially when nothing is being done. These advocates tirelessly feed, clothe, and love those who others treat like animals. We are all in this for the long haul, so please do not think that we will be broken down by power trips and false promises. Shelter now, public bathrooms and water fountains now. One death is too many, and you all have the blood of far too great a number of unhomed people on your hands to be doing nothing. And there are far too many living beings in desperate need of care for your attempts to silence the ones who are. to silence the ones who are actually doing the caring. Thank you.
Jim?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Sacramento, the selective sanctuary city where we literally step over our own displaced neighbors in our humanitarian reach to extend the olive branch to future waves of displaced folks. Sacramento, where an enormous volume of rhetoric, joint meetings, corporate media spin, and political urination projection contests have been generated concerning homelessness. All the while, 1,000 unhomed neighbors remain unsheltered and unhoused. Two weeks ago, it was suggested that 95% of the unleased city-owned buildings were inappropriate for shelter. I would like for it to be made public by criteria that Emily Halcon used to determine that 95% of your buildings cannot shelter human beings. I'd also like to comment that her estimates were that it would cost $1,365 per month per person to provide shelter with services. I'd like to see the numbers on facility cost only, because outsourcing services is completely possible and what we're already doing already and probably more cost efficient. But is this even about the cost? Three weeks ago, I witnessed this council in less than 15 minutes approve $2.5 million in exchanging of hands without any public discussion. This included $300,000, excuse me, for two parks, and $500,000, half a million dollars, for a pilot project involving the arts. I'm not against parks, and I'm not against art. But it's clear that this is not about cost. This council has not produced a better shelter, I'm sorry, a better plan for shelter than the Safe Ground proposal for facilitated encampments that was rejected by most of you last year. Period. No one but Alan Warren is even trying to open up emergency shelter in any district. So, let me be clear, being forced to live without any form of shelter and forced to live without the basic right to rest anywhere in this city without fear of arrest completely impedes human health and development. Shelter is the only thing that can begin to offer 1,000 of our neighbors some dignity. Finally, for any elected official to suggest citizens should stop exercising our rights to criticize our government in exchange for the sanctioning of 200 shelter beds that are 800 shelter beds short, to suggest we must essentially forfeit our First Amendment rights, how dare you put that on our shoulders? These are your decisions that you're making and your decisions that you're not making, not ours. Perhaps the ultimatums worked at Capitol down the street, Capitol in DC where some of you were a couple of weeks ago, but here at our city hall, this council should continue to expect us, with decorum included, to hold you accountable on homelessness, anti-camping ordinance, public safety, transportation, any issue that we deem fit where the taxpayers. So, the decisions that you make and don't make are what we're gonna continue to come and address you. I think that that's what makes our efforts here real democracy. And as independent journalist Amy Goodman says, "Go to where the silence is. Silencing others and being silenced speaks volumes about power imbalances and systemic oppression." One sentence left. Silencing constituents is not what people who claim to be for the underdog usually celebrate.
Good evening.
As I haven't been here in several weeks, because one day, two people, one, two different individuals from your parking enforcement, not only gave me one ticket, they gave me a second ticket, because I went in here to find out, I have a disability, I have inability to walk distance. And I had my vehicle parked over here at Cesar Chavez Park. And I did, when I got out of my vehicle, I never seen any signs saying that there was a restricted time. So, I thought the officer was wrong. So, I walked in very calmly, went into here, and had one of the officers here talk to me and explain to me what I may have needed to do. So, I went back out to my vehicle, only to find a second ticket. I don't know, these tickets are like $55 apiece, and I'm not going to pay them. I have- I have- I have wrote about them to whomever is in charge here, and I am asking to be heard. If these guys can't put these signs where we can see them and where they're visible, then you guys are gonna be left responsible.
We're gonna have our assistant city manager, Fran Hombach, and talk to you about this, and maybe there's something that can be worked out, okay?
See, when I get out of my vehicle, I look down, I look from here, the sign's up there. So, what do you guys expect me to look? Not only that, I do have a vision, I have an eye disease, which makes me inability to see red.
Okay. Well, can we talk about the specifics with Fran and see what we can do maybe to help you?
Well, but on top of that, I'm also upset with what's going on with the homeless population.
Okay.
David Andre is next, and then we will have Robert Copeland, and then Braden Murphy.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, we still don't have any water faucets on in this town. I've only been asking for this for like three years. We've talked a lot, we've hired a huge staff, Sacramento steps forward, all this BS, there's nothing being actually done on the streets to help people with the simple thing like potable water. Until then, I don't think anybody's doing their job. The whole thing's a joke.
Robert?
First of all, I found the action of this city council tonight deplorable. Not letting people speak on certain items, and they don't know what they're doing on the marijuana issue. Why? Get your facts together, then have a meeting. Two, I want everybody involved in Sacramento or statewide, if they got a problem with their state, federal, state, and local governments, and I certainly do, I've been working on campaign finance reform, housing, I'm gonna work on rent control, and a few other issues. I want everybody involved. And how many people have to die that are on the streets, and you will not silence us? I am getting mad at the city council. And where's my city council member? Sacramento, downtown Sacramento, looks like a- how many vacant buildings we got in downtown Sacramento that can be used for jobs? Where are you gonna develop those buildings and land? Look on J Street and 10th, and between 10th and 11th, you see a lot of vacant buildings that can be fixed up for jobs. That's tax money for the city. Thank you.
Braden? Following Braden is Eric Frame, Eric Hoover, Eris Sterling, Jessica Murphy.
When there's a homeless issue on the agenda, it's almost always the last item on the agenda. Tonight, when we talked about gender pay equity, which I think is a reasonable thing to talk about, we just decide, oh, let's spring it up in the schedule, let's reorder where it's gonna be ordered, and let's do this. That's just really amazing, and it just shows where the priorities are. I was happy to see that what we should do is we should put the information to where everybody can see it, to see where the gaps are, so that everybody knows what Mayor Steinberg said is the work we need to do. I would also like to ask a simple task then, that we provide data on the unhomed, how many people have died in the last year, and then clearly put in bold letters what's being done about it, so that the public can see that when they come in and look at data about unhomed people. Putting priority first, people, putting people in priority that have nowhere to go, people have died on the streets, they're homeless, should be our top priority. I was happy to hear Mr. Garrett tonight clearly state, "The city council shouldn't be run like a business. The purpose of the city council is to help those in need." That's what he said, is to help those in need. The people in need are the homeless people. I mean, it's just atrocious. We need to get the data out so the public can see it. You should not be grandstanding in front of ICE. You should be letting the people know how many homeless people we have, and how many people have died, and that we're short on shelter. That should be the priority. And I'm very amazed at how this meeting is run. Some lady came and said, "We should put people first. I just wanna make sure that people get the medicine that they need. A lot of us can't afford the fees." And then people cheered, and they were told not to cheer, not to clap. We all cheered for the kids that were here. Mayor Steinberg led the clapping for the new treasurer, which I actually like the new treasurer. But it's just this clear thing, if you guys like, and especially the mayor, what's happening, you allow it. But if you don't, you don't. And then after, you tell the people they can't cheer, that's when they yell out, because they're frustrated. If people could just be treated with respect, they would treat you with respect. Thank you.
Eric?
Thanks for having me again. Mr. Steinberg, you mentioned the need for a sense of urgency when it comes to pay equity. Please shift that sense of urgency to the homeless for a few minutes, maybe. Just, you know, wrap your mind around it. Sense of urgency for people dying in the streets. I still don't understand the reasoning behind a no camping ordinance. Maybe you guys can explain it more, but, you know, I don't see any reasoning for taking someone's blanket and having them die on the street. Let me give you a little marijuana history, if you will, indulge me. There's a reason marijuana was made illegal for us humans in America, and that was because it actually helped and, you know, prevents cancer. It prevents cancer. It helps with countless disorders, and it was made illegal for a couple of reasons. One, Big Pharma, maybe you guys know them, they don't want anybody getting healed from stuff. They want people to take chemicals and put them in their body and treat symptoms, symptoms after symptoms. Then you gotta keep buying those expensive chemicals and keep putting them in your body, see? Meanwhile, marijuana was there the whole time, but we wouldn't want anyone to know about that, would we, Jeff? You know? No, we wouldn't want that, would we? No, Brown? Furthermore, the war on drugs, completely racist, completely all about getting people in prison so money can be made with people going to prison. So, we talk about the problems, the mitigations, and the monies, and all the money problems, and the mitigation, 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 mitigation. Fuck mitigation.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you.
Love revolution, everybody.
See you next week.
Eric Hoover.
Hoover?
I would say like a Christian way. I'm here because, as Steve Brown, Christian from President's Church, sometimes God's using his interruption. I need help, because, there is a sample, I had an eye appointment from Kaiser, the person posted a cab, did not show up. And I'm also right now saying, I got 40 cents. I cannot pay for the medicine. I broke my arm, this arm, around, probably about March, trying to put a light up, and I moved to a good place. My P E, I signed my P E because my parents' P E, they knew nothing. I moved out on Clay Street, Clay Street, because my cat got evicted, and someone else dressed. And I'm Jimmy from Helping Heart, I have done nothing. I haven't got my stuff from Clay Street. I know I was evicted with my cat, but nothing been done. I almost say, "You're fired," because no help. I know what you're gonna say, you're gonna send someone to talk to me, I understand that.
No, we wanna try to help you.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
What can we do to help you?
Yeah, today, I got recycled stuff. I lost my track phone. I had a number from my dad. My dad told me my mom, who passed around 2014, made a trust fund. I want Jimmy to talk to my dad. I had no way to contact my dad. I lost, what document, my past was to Facebook, YouTube, everything. And I just want my computer back, my TV, and I just wanna get my life back together. But because of people not helping me out, I have eye problem. Trying to think, I want UC Davis, I don't wanna worry about the copay.
Do you have a place to stay?
I'm living in Hotel Berry. My pay went about $5.33, but because other people is not helping me out, they make me feel like I don't care. I wish I had a boyfriend, telling me everything's okay.
Let me just see, if we, and my staff sitting back there, see Jacob and Scott, and wonder if we might get Sacramento steps forward, Ryan and his team to reach out to-
I've been going to this church, and Fig is dead.
Your Hoover?
They help me out in cash sometimes.
Why don't we try to, why don't we try to put together the people who we work with to help, to help you, to try to get together to help you? Can we do that?
Yeah, I just need some people to send apology cards, I'm sorry that we didn't do anything, we didn't go there to talk-
Don't worry about, don't worry about any of that. Do you have, did you write, you have a phone number here?
It's a card I gave to you guys.
Okay, we got a phone number. So, what we're gonna do, can you be at this number, say, tomorrow morning, so that we can have somebody reach out to you to see how we can help you?
Yes, I'll be here in the morning, because here's I'm going in the afternoon, because-
Okay. Why don't we do that? If you do that, we will have somebody call you tomorrow morning, okay, to try to help you.
Yeah, because-
Okay, I'm sorry you're having a hard time.
I'm just having a hard time, because other people, I mean, I tell you the truth, if I was like assigned to God, I'd just like leave town. I wish I could start a new life, but I can't, because people not really help.
We're gonna have somebody in the back here meet with you right in the back and see if, how we can arrange to make sure that we get the right person in touch with you tomorrow morning to try to help you with all of these things, or as many of them as we can anyways, okay? Jacob?
Me and my dad's, my mom's trust fund. I can't-
Okay. We'll do our best to try to help you, okay? Thank you.
Okay, Eris Sterling is next, and then Jessica Murphy. And the last speaker is Michael Boy.
Last night, I went to TLCS, and I realized something. And what I realized is that 100% of the people in the room with me were experiencing homelessness. And the staff members, I had asked them if they were connecting these people to homeless resources, and I've come to find out that they said, "Well, Sacramento steps forward, doesn't do anything. What's the point of connecting them to those services?" And TLCS is the leading respite in Sacramento that helps people for 24 hours get care that they need in the state of a crisis. And I just, I just wanna bring this to your attention, because I feel like if 100% of the people who are in crisis aren't being connected to homeless resources because they don't serve them, you guys need to reevaluate how you're serving people.
Thank you.
Next. Jessica.
Who's after this now?
We have Jessica, then we have Michael Boy. And did we hear from Eris Sterling? Okay, thank you.
You just did, okay. So, we got two more. Go ahead.
I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but again, I've gotten so frustrated with what I've seen as I sit back there with the audience. The definition of body language, the process of communicating nonverbally through conscious and unconscious gestures or movements, and once again, I see the city council and the mayor be disrespectful to the public testimony of all other people. Also, manners, definition, a person on outward bearing or a way of behaving towards others. Once again, I see the mayor and the council members misbehaving towards the public. Respect, a feeling of deep affirmation for someone or something by their abilities or qualities or achievements. Once again, I see the mayor and the council members disrespecting the public. The definition of a temper, a person's state of mind seen in terms of being angry or calm. I've seen angry, once again. So, mine, you ask the mayor every time, is there anything that you can do to help us? And I'm hoping, as a mayor, you show an example of what respect, manners, and a temper, a calm temper, in body language looks like. So, I'm asking you, because you ask the public testimony every time, what can you do to help me, that you show an example to everyone.
There now.
Michael?
Evening, Mayor, council members. I was going to hold off on the database until you got the other pieces of the marijuana ordinance in place. I thought maybe that would be appropriate, and then come back about the requirement for the database. But I feel compelled to mention it in passing tonight because of something that was said by the Sacramento Coalition about the percentages of youth that have tried alcohol before their high school age. The various members, I don't, I can recall all the members on the council who brought up something that required a statistical piece of evidence they didn't have. Several members. And so, maybe it caused me to think, maybe what we, and even you, Mayor, you talked about a consultant, because there were certain things you didn't know. And so, I'm thinking that maybe, I don't know if the city has an economist or a statistician on their staff. on their staff that can begin to gather the data and analyze things for you that you need. Because when somebody says, "Well, we got $30,000, we need to pay this $30,000, $40,000 fee," that's going to drive up the cost of their product for those that even can pay. When somebody's sitting out there, the people that sit out there and just yell out and things, if they've got a cheaper price, do you think they're going to go get a cheaper price? Yes. And it doesn't have to be grown in Sacramento. It can be brought across the river. And they're going to go to the cheapest source they can, which are all the illegal sources that they have right now. So I think there really does need to be some analysis and statistical analysis on that. And again, I'd request the database and...
Thanks on, Mr. Boy. I think we're on the same, pretty much the same page there. Very good. Okay, are there council ideas and questions before we adjourn? I know I have one, but we've got members, okay? Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. This Friday, there's going to be the Friday Night Hot Spot at Rio Tierra Junior High School at 3201 Norsted. That's a great place for teens to get together and play basketball and connect and have some snacks. It's from 7:00 to 11:00 PM for teens aged 13 through 19. And this Saturday, April 8th, hope some of you will join me for a Glen Hall Park Cleanup Day. It's from 9:00 till noon, and we supply the tools and snacks, and you bring a smile and help us clean up our neighborhood park.
Very good. I'm so glad that that's kicking off. Councilmember Gueda.
Thank you very much, Mayor. First, I want to thank our police department, our city attorney's office and our city code enforcement office for a great afternoon on Friday with the Justice for Neighbors program looking at problem areas, problem properties where we've had a number of either drug, violent neighbors, gang issues throughout the district, and the efforts that we've tackled such as Motel Six. I think that's been a huge success. We've been able to tackle the issue of reducing some of the gang activity, prostitution and impacts to the neighborhoods behind that area. A couple of things that came out of that, one is vacant lots, and how do we continue to address the issues of vacant lots? Today, on our, on our council agenda, we had one item, information item on Manassaro Court. It's good to see that vacant lot is now, is moving forward to be developed so we can put more housing. We do have a shortage of housing. But particularly, one area that I want to look at is how do we put additional requirements on vacant lots such as lighting and blight, and blight abatement? And there are areas like on Fowler Street, and I think, Mr. Mayor, I took you out to Fowler Street before you got elected near Capital Estates. And so how do we address some of those vacant lots or look at a vacant lot ordinance to tackle that issue to make sure that we have responsible property owners that are cleaning up those lots and not allowing them to be also places for, you know, prostitution and victims of prostitution? So big kudos to all the staff. Thank you very much. That was a great afternoon, and it shows that there's a lot of success with the Justice for Neighbors program, and also that we have limited resources and we would like to figure out how to grow that more. The couple of events coming up, we had the West Campus High School Women's Basketball Team statewide champions. These young ladies recognize that they can not only keep a 3.7 GPA and above and also be great athletes, that you can't compromise academics for athletics. They're going to have, rain permitting, a parade this Friday, April 7th, from 9:30 AM to 10 o'clock on 58th Street. So rain permitting, we hope you guys, the community can come out and support our young, not only academic athletes in the neighborhood in District 6, right off of 58th Street and Fruit Ridge, near the Stockton Boulevard area. We also have District 6 hotspots, April 7th, 7 o'clock on Friday nights at the Georgetown Center, want to provide a safe place for young people to recreate and have a place where they can be under a positive influence. Also, we're going to have mobile district office hours in District 6, out in the Fruit Ridge area, off of Stockton Boulevard and Fruit Ridge, on April 15th, from 9:30 AM to 11:00 AM, on, actually at the Bell area, a little bit further off of Stockton Boulevard there, but at the Fruit Ridge, off of Fruit Ridge. And then also District 6, April 15th, at 11:00 AM. Mark your calendar for the egg extravaganza, Easter egg hunt with the Neighborhood Association at 11:00 AM. Thank you. With that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. If you like good music, the Camilla Waldorf Annual Spring Contest Concert, not Contest, will be coming up on Thursday, April the 6th. It's going to take place at John F. Kennedy Auditorium. And these are students that are in second through eighth grade, and they are going to be performing. It's going to be a wonderful concert, and we encourage you to come out and attend and support them. Also, we are in search of bunny helpers. They are needed to help us assist and get ready for our egg hunt. These are volunteers that will stuff eggs with candy in preparation of the egg hunt. That's going to take place on Friday, April the 7th, from 3:30 to 5:30 at the Robbie Waters Library. So if you've always wanted to be a bunny helper, this is your opportunity to volunteer for a great cause. And then the following week, the 15th of April, we will have the actual egg hunt. And then our popular trucks and such is making a comeback for 2017 in District 7. We'll start off on the 21st of April at Garchabin Park from 5:00 to 8:00 PM with great food, great music, and tons of family fun. Fun, whatever, it's easy for me to say. So come on out, have a good time.
Good. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tomorrow's going to be a little busy for us. At 4:30 at the Pennell Center, we do our Easter egg stuffing with candies. We have a group of volunteers, but we're reaching out to anyone who'd like to come out and have some fun stuffing the eggs at 4:30 at the Pennell Center. At 6:00, we'll be meeting with our Latino Advisory Committee, and we'll be sure to pose to them some of the questions that we've had here tonight. How can we make those numbers move, especially from the Latino Hispanic community? And then at 6:30, we'll be with the mayor and our budget forum at the Pennell Center. That's 6:30 tomorrow. And then on Saturday at 10:00, we have our Easter egg hunt. We usually get 2,000 to 3,000 kids out there for the Easter egg roll. We have candies that will be stuffed, we divide them by age group, so the big kids don't overrun the little kids, and it's usually a lot of fun. It doesn't last very long, though. It doesn't take those kids long to scarf up those eggs. So we're going to start at 10 o'clock on Saturday, the 8th, at the Pennell, at the Meadowview Park. That's at 76, 7760 24th Street. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Carr. And I just have one. Last week, I attended a great event with Councilmember Warren and Vice Mayor Jennings, which was the reopening of the Grant High School Swimming Pool. And this is a first-class facility. I'm just so proud of the school and the community. So I asked the question, will this be open all summer for kids? And the answer essentially was that maybe if we can recruit and hire enough lifeguards, because we have a shortage of lifeguards in the city. And so I wanted to put out the word here tonight to everybody, the thousands watching at home, that if you are 16 years old or older, there could be, and you're interested, there could be a summer lifeguard job for you, where you make a nice amount of money and, you know, it's a great job. It's a job I know I had as an older teenager. And so the email is lga@cityofsacramento.org. If you just send an email and express your interest, or you can go online to the city's website to fill out an online application, but anybody watching out there who wants to be a lifeguard, the more lifeguards we can hire, we could open that Grand High Pool, you know, with collaborative funding with the Twin Rivers School District and provide incredible opportunity for all the young people out there throughout the summer, so...
And they will train you.
And they will, of course, they will train you as well, because, you know, it requires extensive training, right, to do it, but it's a great summer job.
Mr. Mayor, if, I'm sure there's a lot of young people watching Channel 14 tonight, but if we can do some social media outreach...
Yes.
Try to capture them, that would be great.
Jacob's on it. We're on it.
I'm sure maybe some of the parents are watching.
It's gone viral already.
Put it on all of our websites.
That's right.
Here we go. All right. Thank you, everybody. Nothing else.